So I wanted to start off by talking a little bit about the budget process and the things that go into making the budget. So you can see here a picture of either a funnel or as some people see a martini glass, whichever way you'd like to look at it. The budget is, you know, very fun. There's lots of good things involved with that. So this shows some of the different pieces that all come together to make the budget. And we're going to talk through these different pieces. So as you can see, it's kind of a combination of a budget philosophy, which is an ongoing item, a strategic plan, which is a long-term set of goals, as you know. Our current strategic plan covers about five years in terms of our plans and hopes for that. And then there's also the short-term factors that happened this year. The resources that we have available, the operational needs, requests that come in, and then the costs for personnel. So we're going to go through each of them. We're going to start off by talking about the budget process itself, that funnel or martini glass that shakes it all together and then ends up with the budget at the end. Secondly, we'll go into our budget philosophy, which will involve talking about funds and kind of a refresher on how fund accounting works. Then we'll talk about the strategic plan. We'll cover short-term factors, especially the resources portion first. And finally, we'll look at the full budget document and go over highlights with regards to that. So, starting first on the budget process, as Manager May mentioned, the staff begins working on this around October or November. We start the process off with identifying what we call a base budget. So that is basically to keep operations the same, to keep doing what we've been doing the last several years. And it basically comes with an inflationary adjustment. I think it's typically around half of a percent. So we keep within a half percent. If some costs are going up more than a half percent, which as we know happens often, then we find ways to trim in other places to be able to keep our base budget in bounds with that. If there are things that go over that or things that we're looking at new this year or things we want to be able to consider, there's a separate set of items that are identified known as considerations. We'll go through those in detail as we've done in the prior years. We won't spend a lot of time on the base budget other than just to note the types of programs, the types of things that the departments do, and how we work towards our strategic plan. But we'll spend most of our time focusing on the considerations. And then, as the board's very familiar with, we've had committee meetings starting since January to talk about different things that come up through the budget. So, you know, fire has talked about items in the fire budget at committee meetings. We've discussed items at the Administration of Finance Committee meetings. So you're very familiar with a lot of these items that are coming into the budget, which is what allows us to have consolidated this down to one budget workshop in one night. And then after, as we get that input, put things together, the manager prepares the draft budget and identifies a way to get the budget balanced so that what we can present to you is a budget that's balanced in terms of priorities. And then we have this discussion with the board at this workshop, and then the final approval at the next board meeting. Any questions on the budget process? Okay. All right. So next, we're going to talk about budget philosophy and how funds work. So funds are basically, as you'll recall, little buckets of money that can only be used for specific purposes. It's almost like there are several different companies that all work together and have interactions but have to be considered separately. And for the Village, we've got about 20 funds that we deal with, although fortunately for you, two of them are just for us accountants, and so we don't need to worry about them in the budget. And another three, we don't have to worry about budgeting specifically for. They'll impact the budget but not have direct impact. So the remaining 15 are the ones that we're going to cover in a little bit more detail tonight. All right. So first of all, an overview of funds and how they work. As you'll recall from this diagram from prior years, the budget consists of all the money coming into and out of the operating as well as the fund balance. So we have the revenues that come in, the expenses that go out, the transfers that are between the different funds. And then when all of that is said and done, if there's more money left over, so if more money came in then went out, then we have a surplus which goes down into fund balance. If there's not enough money coming in to cover the expenses going out, then we have a deficit. And so, in terms of kind of personal finance, you'll recognize this, you know, as you have money, if you spend more money in one month because of some bigger needs that you had that month, you can pull it from your savings account. If you spend less, then you can put some money into your savings account. So it works kind of the same way. In terms of fund balance, there are three different categories that we typically talk about in terms of fund balance. One is the reserve, the amount that we want to keep on hand to make sure that we're safe in case anything happens. Then we have what's called a carryover, so things that we started planning on last year. So last year, we said, let's make sure we set aside this money so we can do a project. We may have gotten partway done with the project. We may not have even started it, but we still have that money set aside for it. And so we're carrying that cost over to the next year as carryover. And then finally, we have excess fund balance, which is other money that we can use as we need. In terms of budget philosophy, one of the things the Village has been very cognizant of is that we need to keep ongoing revenues covering operating expenses. So just like in your personal life, if you had a situation where every month you had to be dipping into your savings account and pulling it because you weren't getting enough money in, that would potentially be a problem. You'd need to figure out how to address it. In the same way, we need to make sure that all of our ongoing costs that happen day in and day out are covered by the money that comes in day in and day out. So any one-time extra money we get needs to not be used for those kind of things. And any extra money that we've saved from prior years, again, should not be used for those ongoing costs. So we try to separate those into two different categories. We do also have one-time expenses and carryovers, which can come from fund balance and do. Specifically, we have a lot of use of our fund balance, so what's technically called deficit spending, where we're using the money we've saved from prior years for capital, stormwater, motor fuel tax, convention tourism, and then our IMRF and FICA accounts. So these are the big project accounts where it's designed to work that way, where you save up money and the money you saved you can use, just like if you needed to do a down payment on a car or buy a new dishwasher when yours broke. The general fund has an interesting relationship with Fund 68, or what we call the excess fund balance. So the way that we have it set up is in the general fund, that will have our minimum reserve, which the board set at 20%. And so that'll have our minimum, and that's where all the transactions happen, where the money comes in, the expenses go out, transfers happen. And then, any amounts that are left as carryover or one-time projects that we're doing come from 68 back into the general fund. So you'll see as we go through the budget, as we have one-time expenditures in the general fund, equipment purchases or those kind of things, that money is offset by coming from Fund 68. Okay. So that kind of covers fund basics 101. Any questions on that piece or budget philosophy? Okay. And moving on to the strategic plan. As the Village Board is well aware, we adopted a strategic plan a couple of years ago and have been working towards that. And the mission that that strategic plan establishes is shaping a vibrant community in future through connection, service, and leadership. And that's what we've tried to make happen in the budget as we identify what costs we want to do and where we want to spend our money and prioritize things. It needs to be the things that are reflected in the strategic plan and that tie to these categories. So as a brief reminder, the strategic plan includes five different vision components, so components of what we think Westmont should look like or we would like to envision Westmont looking like. So the first item is governance, which is leadership, collaboration, working with other entities, being able to provide services and maintaining our facilities so that we can provide those public services. In terms of the budget, you'll see a lot of what's in the governance section is primarily equipment and facilities because those are large-ticket items that we need to be able to perform the jobs. The second vision component was identity and image. So that involved things like engagement, marketing, beautification, and then also part of the important part of Westmont's image and identity as being a safe place. So you'll see very large portions of our budget with an identity and image dedicated to the police and fire departments as they help create that safe identity. We have the downtown, which is fairly self-explanatory, and economic development. And then our infrastructure category includes both utilities and mobility and access. So you will see both of those reflected. So the utilities would include both stormwater and our water utility. This shows a breakdown in terms of village-wide expenditures, excluding transfers of how we spend our money in terms of these different items. As you can see, the biggest cost is in infrastructure and followed closely by governance and identity and image, as we've talked about for those reasons. Okay. Any questions on the strategic plan? All right. Moving on to number four, the short-term factors. We're going to start by focusing on our resources. So that is all the money that comes in. So it includes revenues, the money that comes in from outside, the transfers, movement of money between funds, and then the use of our fund balance. So this chart shows the village-wide revenues and what makes up the largest portion of our revenues. We're going to talk about everything that's on that list that's not other. So we're going to be going through just over 75% of our village revenues very quickly. If there are questions about other revenues that are not on the list, if we want to dive into that other 27%, we can, but we wanted to at least start off by covering about that 75%. So the first item that we have, our biggest revenue generator, is sales tax. You can see over the course of time how we've been, it's been climbing up slowly. We're projecting to hit about $9.2 million this year, and so we're conservatively estimating our budget for next year to be $8.9 million, so almost $9 million. What we typically do is we try to budget a little bit less than the prior year. We had gotten into an issue, as you'll recall, back in 2007, '08, and '09, as the economy started to go down, that we, our budgets, were still trying to catch up. And so they'd always been thinking, oh, we're going to be going a little higher because sales tax always goes higher. And so since that time, we've started saying, well, let's budget a little bit less than what we bring in last year so that we know we're okay. And if we do bring in more, then that is surplus that can either cover when other expenses go higher than expected or can go into the fund balance to be used in future years for one-time expenses. So the good news is this is going up, and that's a positive thing in terms of our revenue. This next item is the property tax, the revenue that we extend in terms of property tax. And you'll notice the total revenue is going up from 6.42 to 6.58. However, that number that's in the middle, right by the orange section, that's for the general fund. So the first part up to the orange is our items that go in the general fund. The items above it are other items. So you'll see the general fund is actually going down a little bit, even though total costs are going up. And the reason for that is that police pension costs are growing as they're intended to do. So when the actuary sits down and figures out how much do we need to be putting aside for police pension to pay these benefits in the future, the actuary realizes that there's inflation, and so they build into their calculation the expectation that we're going to start off paying a small amount, but then every year it should go up around 4% or 5%. So that's the typical way that the actuary assumptions work. So it's expected that police pension is going to grow because otherwise we would have had to put in a lot more money in the past that we just didn't have. So they work that way for a reason, and it's good. The challenge is if police pension's going up 4% or 5%, and our revenue that we get from the county goes up by CPI, which is, you know, typically 1% or 2%, that means the other funds in property tax need to have slight reductions. So you'll see the general fund going down. This next tax type is a combination of three different taxes, what we in general call our utility taxes. So it's our comm, ed, telecom, and NICOR. You can see how those fit together. It kind of goes up and down. Sometimes it's higher, sometimes it's lower. This last year, this current year, we're projecting to come in a little bit lower than budget, and so we've reduced the budget a little bit for next year. Places reading tax revenue, you can see we have a much shorter trend with that as it's a fairly new tax. You can see that it's been growing a little bit. We had a little bit of a large increase the last year or so, from 2017 to 2018, as you recall. We had a big push to make sure we got a lot of compliance in that. We got everybody that we had initially targeted as having an issue, they're now making payments and getting caught up. We have, of course, you know, had a few of those people who got caught up who are now starting to miss a couple of payments here and there, and so we're working on that with them. The next item that's on the list is construction fees, and you can see how that has trended. You can see this year, we had a significant increase, and a large portion of that increase, about 500,000 of it or so, was made up of a few large projects. So as you'll recall, we've had some expansion of auto dealers going on recently. We've had a storage facility that opened up. We've had some remodels of the Hilton, the Valdi. So some of those permit fees for those things really pushed this up to a really high extent this year, which is great. It's good to see lots of construction, investment in the town. The challenge for budgeting is we can't expect that every year is going to have big unexpected projects. And so we are continuing to budget just a small amount. If we do have big projects next year, that's great, and we're happy to have them, but we don't want to set our budget too high and then have to start scrambling to find out what we're going to do once we realize we're not having as many large projects. So we're still trying for the large projects and cautiously optimistic that we'll have lots of large projects again, but we're not putting it in the budget until they happen. Hotel motel, tax, you can see how that trend has gone. And you can see this year, we're actually looking at coming in a little bit less than we had last year, and the last couple of months have been even a little bit less. So we, I think we'll still probably hit close to that, $757,000. But in terms of budgeting, we're budgeting a little more than we budgeted last year, but we're still planning to come in a little bit less than what we're projecting this year. It's a conservative projection. In terms of video gaming revenue, it's not a large portion, but I know that it's a hot topic and something that we often, you know, keep track of and wanted to just let you know, we are bringing in right around $300,000 with video gaming. Water sales is another large portion of our revenue. It's obviously a very large portion of the water fund. We'll talk about that revenue stream in a little bit more detail when we get to the water account, but I wanted to at least let you see the trend and see where we are in terms of projections and budgets for next year. Any question on any of those revenue trends? Anyone coming in?
Just a comment on the water revenue. I mean, when we get to the budget, we'll describe it, but it's not just gross revenue. I mean, we have the expenses with purchasing it and distributing it too, but technically it's revenue.
Yes. All right. So the next section of money, of resources available are based on transfers. So the next couple of slides walk through the different transfers we have. As we talked about, our funds function kind of like different companies, and like companies, they interact with each other. And so one of the things that they do is there's one single debt fund which makes all of our debt payments for our bonds. But to get money out of that debt fund, lots of different funds need to give it a little bit of money so that it has the money to pay for the bonds. So the first item you'll see there is the stormwater for the bond we issued last year for $7 million. It's transferring $480,000 into the debt fund. And then the other three funds are transferring in money based on the 2013 bonds that we issued. So we're transferring in amounts from the general fund, which came from places reading tax, amounts from motor fuel tax, and then amounts from Capital Projects Fund. The water fund handles most of its expenses, but in doing that, there's other expenses that it needs to pay to other funds. So first of all, in our ordinances, we have a tax on any water utility of 5%. So if any water utility were to come in and open any private-owned water utility, they'd need to pay 5% in taxes. Similarly, we charge the water fund 5% of their gross revenues as a payment in lieu of tax. And then we have historically designated that money to go directly to the Capital Projects Fund to be able to fund capital projects. In the, on the other side of the screen, you'll see the pension costs. And so all the pension costs are actually paid from a single fund, the IMRF fund, similar to debt. And for that, the water then needs to reimburse the IMRF fund for its pension costs. So we have that transfer. The final piece of transfers are from the general fund. So as you know, this is the fund where we get most of our revenue, and then we have most of our expenditures. With that, the general fund then needs to send money out to the other funds. So as we talked about, carryovers and one-times flow from Fund 68. So this year, we have about $354,000 of carryover items in the general fund. We have about $567,000 worth of one-time requests in the general fund. So those monies are coming from the excess fund balance into the general fund. Then in turn, the general fund is sending money out to other funds. We have $124,000 we send to capital. That's the amount we historically gave to capital when we had our own local motor fuel tax, and we continued passing that on to capital even when that tax ended. Similarly, we have money going to the stormwater fund. As you're aware, the stormwater fund was established when the residents voted by referendum to adopt a supplemental sales tax to go to fund stormwater and infrastructure. At that time, the general fund had been doing some stormwater-related items, some ditching, some grading, some sewer jetting, and we felt that we didn't want to have this new sales tax cover costs that we had currently been doing. So because of that, the general fund sends $45,000 to the stormwater fund so that it's still paying the same share that it had been paying from the other revenue sources. There's also the transfer to debt service from places for reading that we've talked about, and then the transfer to our vehicle replacement fund, which, as you're aware, is a fund where we set aside money to be able to replace vehicles as they come due. So we have fire engines that need to be replaced, our pumper trucks, we have ambulances, we have large trucks for public work. So these are items that last for several years, but we want to make sure we're setting aside a little bit each year to be able to pay for this so that we have interest working for us instead of working against us when we buy the vehicles. So any questions on any transfers? All right. Moving on to another source of resources, which is the money that we have saved up. So it's basically like using our savings account. When we come up with these estimates in terms of how much we have left, we have to decide how we're going to calculate that and what we look at. There's two major ways to do it. One is by looking at the cash you have on hand, so what's in the bank account. The other one is the fund balance, which takes into account cash, everything else we have, everything else somebody owes us, and everything else that we owe someone else. And what we do to be conservative is we take whichever of those two is lower. So that's what we say is what we want to do. We don't want to run into a situation where we say, oh, sure, we've got lots of money. Look at all this. And then it turns out that we think we have lots of money because the water has lots of water pipes running through the ground that are worth a lot of money, but we can't really spend it. Similarly, we don't want to get in the situation where we say, oh, we've got a lot of money in the bank, but unfortunately, we have half of it promised to somebody else, and we forgot about that. So that's why we take the lowest of the two. What the auditors will look at and what you'll see at the final end of the audit process is the fund balance basis. But we do the more conservative approach as we do this budget estimate so we don't plan to spend more than we can. So as Manager May kind of re-explained it to me after I explained this process to him and explained, you know, what we have left after we have established our balances, the way he put it is, so you're saying there's money left even after we do the Spencer's conservative and then more conservative approach? And I said, yeah, pretty much. So the conservative and more conservative approach that we're looking at is what's listed here. For the balances, we do have what we've established last year's recommended minimums. As you'll recall, one of the things in the strategic plan was, let's start looking strategically. Let's look long-term. Instead of making some decisions kind of every single year of how much do we want to have in this account, we decided that it made a lot of sense to come up with some general ideas that we tried to work towards for our minimum balances. And so as you'll recall from last year, we'd established for operating expenditure accounts like the general fund and convention tourism, we want to have at least 20% of our annual expenses there. In our capital accounts, we wanted to have at least one year's worth of revenue in there. So our capital projects, we want to make sure the amount of revenue that comes in is amount we've got there in case anything happens to our revenue stream for the next year, we're still okay. In terms of debt, our goal is to have one year's worth of debt payments, excuse me, so that, again, if anything happens, we've got the money to make that year of debt payments. Now with that, there are some additional caveats. So as you recall, in the general fund, about a year or two ago, we said our 20% base is good, but there was a lot of uncertainty going on with the state, and so we had decided, let's have a little bit additional set aside in case there's some interruption in our business and one of our major revenue streams. In our LGDF, in our sales tax, or in any other of our major revenue streams, we wanted to set aside some money for interruption purposes. So we've done that as well. In the TIFs, we don't have a specific minimum balance because the main goal right now is to start building them up. They don't have a lot of money, and so basically after we've identified, here's the expenses we have to spend, our minimum balance is whatever's left after that. So that's our, you'll see our amount left over after minimum balance is zero because our minimum balance is set to say as much as we possibly can. The stormwater infrastructure fund is still a new fund, so while we'd like to have a year's worth of revenue, what we've set last year and we're still holding on to is about half a year's worth of revenue. The DEA fund does not have a minimum balance. We're able to use much of that as we need to. And then the vehicle replacement program looks at future years. So it says, you know, if we need to replace a fire pumper every so many years, let's look out that many years to make sure we don't dip below where we need to be. So that's how we came up with these targeted balances last year, and those remain our targeted or recommended minimums. Any questions on those? All right. So now we're going to dive into the budget. We're going to talk about the budget document itself as well as short-term factors. As we go through those considerations, we'll talk about the operational needs, the requests, the reasons that we're doing these different items. All right. So for those following along on their Chromebooks, we're now moving over to the other document called B-02 Strategic Plan. And we're going to start on the tab that is green. The first tab, furthest to the left, is called Fund Summary. We're going to start on green. We're going to work our way till we get to red, so we'll start on green and stop on red. So this first tab shows the summary of all the funds, and you can see in our general fund, we expect to start with about $5 million, get in about $26 million, spend about $26 million. We'll have a net change or a surplus of $120. And then, so our new ending balance is about $120 higher than it was, which means we're about $120 above our recommended minimum balance. So you can see the same thing for the excess general fund balance. You'll see we're planned to end at, right, about $2 million. And then we can walk through each of these different sections. So in terms of capital project funds, you can see we're going to look through the considerations of all of these all at once. But you can see here across the top what we have in terms of available balances, starting out, the sources, the uses, and the totals. In all cases, we are at the point where we have a little bit more than our recommended minimum balance, so we're in a good position. Although you'll also notice it's not huge amounts above our recommended balances, so if everything costs exactly what we expect it will, which we know it probably won't, but if it does, and if all the money comes in exactly as we've estimated, we'll have a few hundred thousand dollars left in each of these different accounts to be able to do something with in the future, but not large amounts. All right. So let's move into the Capital Project Fund tab. So as we've done in the past, we're going to be going through this as a group of funds, but we're going to talk about each different section of the strategic plan. So first of all, in the governance, which as we talked about is largely equipment and facilities, as you may imagine, we have a lot of items in the Capital Projects Fund. So this includes an expansion of the parking lot at the fire department headquarters. It includes $150,000 for a fueling center. It includes $90,000 for a holder. This holder is a vehicle that is able to help take care of some watering of the flowers in the downtown. There was some discussion by some trustees about the fact that using the current method takes two employees, and so we have a truck that drives out, and then we have to have two employees if we've got a truck getting in and out of traffic and dealing with all that while watering the flowers. And so one of the options to be able to conserve manpower, at least to some extent, is to purchase a holder, which would allow one employee to do the watering. However, its tank is much smaller, so another employee will probably need to be involved to some extent in terms of filling up the holder and bringing water in the truck. That can be done on a side street and doesn't have to be done on Cass Avenue. So that $90,000 should be able to help with that.
You know, and it's a piece of equipment that, I mean, when we last talked about it, it was due to the watering, but it is, it's an all-season vehicle. It's a smaller articulated vehicle that for all things in the central business district, whether it's snow removal on the sidewalks or, you know, tight work. So it has a lot of purposes. It sounds funny when it's $90,000 to water flowers, but that will be one of its duties.
Yes.
But this won't be an item like what I called the dune buggy that we bought a couple of years ago, and I've seen twice since.
Well, I don't know what you mean, like that. It's a small articulated...
But I mean, it's like a unique vehicle that we were supposed to use for all these different things really has been very limited in how we've used it. And it was a big ticket when we did it. You remember, you didn't like me calling it a dune buggy.
Well, I remember that part. I don't agree that it's, you know, got no use just because you're not seeing it, but we, you know...
In general, I don't think it's being utilized for the different things it was promised, the snow removal, the different things that, you know, it was going to be used for the train station, snow removal and so forth. So, again, just asking, hoping that that doesn't happen again.
Okay. Very excellent. We also have in there the continuation of the design for the public works facility, so this is the amount that we expect to have left in the budget. As you know, that's in, currently in process. We have duct cleaning for the Westmont Center, and then, in general, other Westmont Center expenses, which are fairly typical of each year. So the duct cleaning is a new item, and you'll see that represented also in the general fund. There's been a couple of comments or requests for some duct cleaning, so those are included. Under identity and image, the, as you may imagine, the major fund that's involved with most of these items is the convention tourism fund. So that fund is one that can only be used to encourage people to come to visit Westmont, whether for the day or to spend the night. And so with that, that's why there's so much focus on the identity and image within there. So we have money set aside in there for the 100th anniversary, we have $80,000 that have not yet been spent, although the committee has identified lots of, a lot of that money to be spent. There's purchasing of holiday decorations every year, which is, I think, $15,000 a year, so there's some additions to the mural projects. So there's a lot of things that have already been committed of that $80,000, but we still have $80,000 left that we can still spend. We have $12,500 left as a carryover from branding, from the branding initiative, that's also split with the general fund, so you'll see that there as well. We have $5,000 for trees in the central business district. We have our payments to the chamber, and this $94,000 involves both the Westmont Auto Mile payment, as well as the economic development partnership payment. We have $73,000 in communication, which is largely portions of salary of our staff, as well as a few other items, but that's the large portion of it. We have payments regarding the DuPage Convention Visitors Bureau, that's both our annual dues, as well as the approximately $10,000 worth that we have committed to grants to be able to help with some of their projects. We have our gateway and wayfinding signs, and this is something that is split in between convention tourism and the capital projects. So we have about $300,000 in the convention tourism specifically for wayfinding signs, and we've got about $460,000 in the capital budget, more for our gateway signs. You'll notice that the total amount of total included in the budget is $760,000, while the total initial request is $810,000, and that it's highlighted in yellow. As we talked about, the departments prepare an initial budget, and then, once we see how much money we have, we have to go through and decide which items we can find and which ones we have to say we need to hold off on. And so this is one of those situations where it was determined that we needed to scale back a little bit on what we had initially hoped to be able to do in terms of gateway signs. So there's several different stages, we should still be able to do the primary signs, we may have to scale back a little bit on the secondary signs this year, but we're hopeful that we can get those, more of those done in future years. We have $100,000 total, split between convention tourism and capital projects for the gateway beautification corridor project. This is, right now, the, we've got permitting fees for the county and state, as well as design fees listed here. So this is, we're looking into getting it designed to be able to determine the final cost to do some improvements along our corridors. We're specifically looking at Ogden around Pasquenelli area, and then at Cass Avenue, a little bit north of Ogden. So some of the major corridors, major gateways coming into our community, we're looking at reducing some of the pavement, putting up things like medians, some additional landscaping, some of those to make those more attractive corridors. So that $100,000 is, again, for the engineering and permitting. We have $40,000 for a hoarder cultural list, which is split between the general fund and the convention tourism fund. As we just talked about, we've got some gateway signs, which are going to have landscaping, we're looking at some additional landscaping in our corridors, and with that, it was determined that it would be very helpful to have an employee who has some of those landscaping skills to be able to work with that. This would be a public works employee who is also available for plowing snow in the winter, and so that would be a benefit in terms of that coverage as well. We have $15,000 set aside for our mural project. We're still, I believe, in the process of deciding if we're going to do it, but if we do go in that direction, we wanted to make sure we had money in the budget to cover that. We have money set aside for a railroad right-of-way upgrade. This is something that community development is looking into, some grants to be able to see if we can get that to help with some of this cost, but we do have money in the budget to cover at least some landscaping, even if there is not a grant. We have our typical 20,000-year donation to Richmond Garden, and then, in addition to that, this year, we have $75,000 from the convention tourism fund for Richmond Gardens doing some previous paving. So when we have people out for our alley projects, we're going to have them also come and do some work in Richmond Gardens, and that'll, it's estimated to be about $75,000 in additional costs. Our sister cities program, as you'll recall, last year, we established a budget of $10,000. This year, we're increasing that to be about $20,000 from the convention tourism fund. In special events, we've got about $61,000. This includes, a large portion of this is the staff time that is involved with doing special events. So as we're granting employees overtime to take care of these special events and the setting up and cleaning up, we're able to take the overtime costs and book them, instead of having them come out of the general fund, they come out of the convention tourism fund. So we're able to do that. The, we've got Sister City bricks around the village hall for $5,000. We have Westmont First of about $5,500 in convention tourism. There's another similar amount in the general fund. It's not exactly split in half, because there's some things that Westmont First does that don't promote convention tourism, so some of it is just in general, but it's close to the same dollar amount. We have the $10,000 that we have historically paid to WSCC over the last couple of years, and then we have a couple of other new WSCC items. So one is $7,500 so that WSCC has the ability to hire some part-time staff to be able to set up and take down for some of these events, to be able to free up some of our staff time. And then we also have a new item of $24,000 to WSCC to be able to allow them to have a special event coordinator, so that as there are new special events, or as special events come in, WSCC is able to have somebody that can help work with them, coordinate with them, and sort of be their interface, working with the village and setting up these new special events. So it wouldn't just be the cruising nights and the Taste of Westmont, they would help with other events as well. I think they've already taken on some of that role, but to be able to allow them to do that, for extent, obviously, they'd need some additional staff and some help with that. So that's what that $24,000 represents. Any questions so far?
No, just on that last one, I wanted to add, there's more responsibility that comes with that, too, so they, when you, it's to expand the, I don't know, just, I'll just say the portions they administer for us, too. So right now, you have every special event, whether it's a race or a single event, and they all come one-on-one, the village board, we want to route everything through one place and evaluate them all the same way, and then have that recommendation, you know, come back to you. So that's a big picture of what that, the coordinator portion is there.
Okay, the next item, the next section of the strategic plan that we want to talk about is the downtown. So we have a lot of things in convention tourism that cover the downtown, as you're, I'm sure you're very aware. We have, first of all, the new request this year is for the banner poles, and so that is $25,000 to be able to do banner poles, so we can have banners to promote things going on in the downtown, things within the village. In addition to that, we have the items that are our typical downtown expenditures. So those would be things like the lights downtown, holidays decorations, the downtown special events that happen, so a lot of the overtime for the Taste of Westmont, or those events that happen in the downtown are covered in this downtown section. In economic development, we have our chamber external funding, that's how we, what we pay them to do some of that tourism work for us, that we've historically paid for a number of years. In the infrastructure section, as you may imagine, there's a lot in our capital projects, our motor fuel tax, and our stormwater sections. We'll walk through some of these. Again, as requested in prior years, for most things, if they didn't merit special mention, we have grouped them in what's called aggregate under $100,000. So you'll see those amounts there. The items that did want to call your attention, too, and the first one is not, it's a large dollar amount, just to point out that we still have 2008 C-Max sidewalk that we expect that the state is going to be billing us to pay $10,000, so we have that set aside, just sort of to highlight that some of the carryovers that we have in our fund are for projects we haven't done yet, others of our carryovers are for projects that we're still waiting to make final payments on, even 10 years after the fact. So we have a carryover in our budget of motor fuel resurfacing from 2017, we have another $390,000 for next year's resurfacing. We have money in our stormwater fund to do some work on the 400 block of North Warwick, 6101 South Cass, 61st and Cumner, as well as 61st and Richmond, Burlington, and then some detention for, at Cass and Burlington, as part of the public works facility project. We have the Cass Avenue Richmond intersection, and then we have the alley sections, and these are split between capital projects and stormwater, because the stormwater portion covers the fact that we're doing it with previous pavement. And so we've got three sections that are listed here, Section D, Section E, and Section G. Section E is the one that we will be building this year, and so that is 700, almost $730,000. Section D, we're going to be designing. Section G was one that we were thinking about doing, and again, because of costs related to, so for a number of reasons, one of them being costs, we decided to hold off on that and do that another year, to slow back on the alley construction a little bit. Also, Section D and Section G are just this, so Section D is just the other side of the tracks, and Section G is, we've just this side of the tracks. And so as you know, we've got some projects going on in those areas, and so part of the hesitation is we want to wait to see how things fall out with those projects before we start spending the money to design an alley, and then find out, well, based on what happened, now it's, we have to change it.
Spencer, one more time on how you're labeling those alleys.
ABC, south to north on the Lincoln side, DEF, south to north on the Linden side. G is south of the tracks here, behind Quincy.
And C not, obviously, not on this list.
Not for construction or, or design, right?
Design, no. Not currently. And is that, is that how the staff sees it, is, as far as priorities?
Well, there was the going, and we make decisions, we start doing the engineering, and then things might change within the year as well. So we had the ones that we did that we could easily do, we've got other ones that are, you know, there's redevelopment talk adjacent to it, so there's some question whether or not we should be constructing the sections that, you know, might be in further design. So we're, I mean, we are hopping around looking for the, you know, the best order to do it.
It seems like C has really fallen apart, and I assumed that tonight, that that was going to be the next one to go, so I was a little surprised to just not see it on there.
Well, that's, I mean...
And again, you're talking C, you're talking C as in between Naperville Road and Norfolk, correct?
Right.
On, on the west side, okay.
Yeah, this is just the best fit right now, there's nothing to say we can't reorder any of these.
And again, D being basically behind LaSalle Bank is that section from Norfolk to Irving.
By the 000 block, the parking lot north to Irving.
Okay. And again, I thought that was the one we were going to hold off on.
Yeah, there are no construction costs, it's just finishing the design work, and then if there's anything that has to be incorporated into whatever else is going on there, at least we have that design component to make sure they meet to it. We don't have to build it, we're just figuring it out now.
So then, best projected on C would be at least two years out.
We can, with this version, yes, but we can, you know, proceed with designing that, too. There's, nothing preventing us from switching any of these, it's just, there's pros and cons for every block.
That, yeah, I get that part of it, you know, but it just seems like a long wait, because it, I don't know if there's a winner or what's going on there, but it seems to really be falling apart at a rapid rate there, so, again, just questioning how, how that was going down, so.
Next item that's on the list is the streetscape project, we're just carrying over the same money we had from this year. As you know, we're looking at a couple of different ways to work on that streetscape project, and looking at designing sort of the smaller version right here on Quincy initially. Jill just confirmed us, I said those, got the right street there, that's good. We've got the depot project and Storm G.I.S sewer outlets, which are common, appear in each budget. We've got the IMS pavement analysis and motor fuel tax, it's been a while since we've done that, that'll help us identify which roads are in most need of resurfacing. We have some money for Norfolk and Linden, and then this, the next item there labeled offset is something I want to draw your attention to, just to let you know how we're structuring this. If you were to go through and add up all the stormwater bond projects that we're planning on doing, you'll come to more money than we got in the stormwater bond. And so as a result of that, we are going to be saying, we've got money set aside in the stormwater infrastructure fund. So if the projects that we're able to get done this year exceed the amount we got in the bond, we have enough money in the stormwater infrastructure fund to cover that cost. As you know, projects can take a while, we may not get all of them done this year, and that's why we're leaving them all in the bond fund, so we don't guess which projects will be done when and end up not spending out the bond proceeds before we need to. So we're putting them all in the bond fund, but if needed, we'll be moving some of them to the infrastructure fund. So you can see some of the other reconstruction that has been kind of ongoing for a while. You can see the other stormwater bond projects that are there, and then what we're doing on an ongoing basis in the stormwater infrastructure fund in terms of jetting and grading, and then the debt transfer. Any questions on, any other questions on the infrastructure?
Spencer, how much is in the stormwater infrastructure?
Yeah.
I don't need to go up there, but a quick question, what is the work being done at 6101 South PS basin for 1.9 million?
So that's a detention basin, so, sorry, so for the benefit of the recording of the public, there's a question about what specifically is being done at 6101 South Cass Avenue. So that's right by the fire department, and it's an area that's had some stormwater issues, and so we're expanding that stormwater detention basin there to cover the needs of that area.
Stormwater infrastructure fund?
So in the stormwater infrastructure fund, we're starting off with about, this is back on the fund summary page, with about 2.7 million in there right now, we are going to be getting in about 1.5 million in revenue. And so then, if we spend, so we have 3.5 million dollars of expenditures, including saving 2.7 million in case the bond fund needs it. After that is done, then we will have about $767,000 left. If we're, since our plan is to have about half of a year's worth of revenue, that means we'll have $7,000, almost $8,000 more than that targeted minimum amount. So if it's used to cover all these costs for stormwater bond, it'll be depleted, but next year, we'll get another 1.5 million to be able to continue to work on things with. And debt service is about 500,000 a year.
Can I start texting my questions to Mary, and then just have her ask, so it doesn't look like I'm always asking the same one? But I, I guess, are we supposed to be asking questions?
Yes, please do.
Or I don't know, I feel like I'm the only one, but if, what is this Norfolk and Linden, again, a million-dollar, the detention there, what, what does that project consist of and what's involved there?
Particular one, so the, the whole stormwater issue in and around the corner, so the, you know, we're thinking about it in phases, but the first one, it's, if you recall, it's this, one of the intergovernmental stormwater management things we're doing with the school district. So it's to take the, the field, the empty lot, and turn that into a stormwater management facility while still maintaining playground features, so they can still use the parcel for school activities. And then there's related improvements along the parkways and the street frontages, actually along all three sides. So that, that's that portion of the project. There's another phase that, you know, can't be done until, you know, we're property owners, if we even are, but there's, there may or might be opportunities across the street to the west, between that and the alley in there, so there might be room for, you know, stormwater improvements in there, too. But this is the one that's available. These are, you go all the way back to when we formed the stormwater management program, this was one of the quick start locations.
Okay. And this, this goes to those residents' concerns that came to the water department when we had the public works there, I believe there's even a staff member?
Definitely part of it, but, I mean, that, it's that issue, yeah.
Okay, very good, thank you. I was just asking, I hadn't seen it on the radar for, I guess that's a long time ago when that started. when that started. So, thank you.
Okay. Other questions on infrastructure? This, I know there's a lot to go through in large amounts.
What are we trying to do at Pascon Alley in Ogden?
Not much for 60...
I know it's only 66 grand, but with all that work that they did a year and a half ago...
Pull up the details on that.
When the, when the, when the state put in the extra lien and everything, I'm kind of surprised that something else needs to be done at this point in time. Or maybe I'm missing something.
Sure you're that. Noriel's walking in.
Good job.
The remaining balance is just i dots. Time to process on their end and send us our final bill for our local share.
So it's for work done?
It's work done, then, okay. We haven't paid it yet, okay.
Takes a nap.
Thank you.
I'm just, I hate, I hate it when somebody puts a project in and all of a sudden somebody comes behind them and says, "Oh, let's tear it up again."
Yes. Now that Noriel's leaving, any other questions for him?
And then it's just money movement without any work being done, okay.
Okay. So then, while we're on that same topic, wanted to touch base on the debt service fund. So this is where we get the money to pay for it. Looks like that's pretty small on the screen. I'm going to try to zoom in a little bit. That might help a little bit. Okay. So we've got a couple of items on here that you can see are highlighted in yellow. So these are amounts that were considered and good ideas, but we're not doing them currently. So the first is if we were to do the Public Works Facility bond, that's about $750,000 a year we'd come up with. Obviously, we need to get it designed first, so we're not planning on issuing the bond and making payments on that bond this year because it isn't designed yet. We have the...
What would be the total, like 15 million? How much would the bond be for?
Yeah, right around 15 million. Yep. And then, yes.
Did we skip a page or?
Did we? Which one comes next on that one?
Well, did we not finish the page 24? Let's see. It seemed like the last thing trustee Eddington asked about was the Pascon Alley Ogden, and then when we flipped.
Oh, sorry about that. Sure. Let's go back. Let's go finalize that. I wanted to see if you were paying attention.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing as I looked around the room. I'm glad I paid attention.
All right, so we've got, excuse me, we have the property acquisition services. That's something that we have noticed as we've purchased properties for stormwater. We haven't really set aside any money to work on taking down structures or any of those things. We want to make sure that money is specifically set aside in the budget. We've got some design engineering for Richmond and Grant, street improvements for stormwater, as well as Richmond Avenue and 63rd Street, street banks stabilization. And then we have the stormwater property acquisition. As you recall, when we got the bonds, we set aside some money to be able to purchase property. We use it as needed when property becomes available. And then we have the transfers for debt service at the bottom, and then a little bit for West Quincy street parking, and that's something that has been in the budget and continues forward if there's ever a good opportunity for that. And then Wilmatt Avenue, Wilmatt Avenue 55th to 56th, that's some design engineering. It's something that we haven't been able to identify the money to construct it yet. We have the money in there for design engineering. If we do have the funds to be able to construct it, we can finalize some of that engineering. Other questions on those?
I did have questions on those.
Great.
That's why I had. So that $650,000, that's what's remaining?
Yes.
And so we don't have that as far as a project? It's for future uses if need be? Is that where that transfers through?
Yes. Yep. As, as we need it, if we need it for any of these, or if properties become available, we have something there.
And then I see you have the other one highlighted, $170,000 to the 545. That's the same scenario as, as the previous where...
Yes. So it's, it would be great if we'd had enough money in the stormwater infrastructure fund or the stormwater bond fund to be able to cover construction and engineering, but at this point, we're able to just do the engineering this year. We're going to have to wait on construction until we have more funds available. Okay. Thank you.
Spencer, do you know, we've got $650,000 left. Do you know what that fund started with? How much we've acquired? I knew I was going to stop.
I don't recall for sure. I want to say we've acquired a little bit. I know we've typically been putting in about $1 million in the budget. So this, last year we put $1 million in the budget, and I think we had a little bit before that, so probably a total of 1.5, I would think we spent some of that at this point. As you recall, we spent some of a prior bond also on some property acquisition. I'm not sure adding it all together, but of this bond, when this bond started, we had $1 million in there, so about $350,000 so far.
Thank you.
Other questions? So then with debt service, the other one that is not flowing through, in addition to the Public Works Facility bond, is the CBD Streetscape. As you're aware, we've talked about this as well, also right around the $13 to $15 million bond range, and not something we have budgeted at this point. That's why we're trying the smaller project to see how that works. So that was also a change from what would have been ideal. Any questions on debt service? Okay. I do want to point out, on the topic of debt service, on the fund summary sheet, with regards to debt service, which we're to the, a bit more to the right, this is probably one of the earlier sheets, but just mention it so you're aware of it. The debt service fund is going to be having an ending balance of about $732,000. We would like it to be able to have a balance of about 1.2 million. What happened last year when we issued the bond, we had budgeted to take the roughly $480,000 from stormwater, give it to debt service, and typically, the way the bonds work is you issue a bond, and then the next fiscal year is when you start making your payments. What happened with this bond was it turned out that if we were to get the bond and make an initial payment on it, you know, six or seven months later, so in the same fiscal year, long-term, it made everything, ended up getting us a little bit better of a deal. And so we'll have one less payment at the end, but one payment earlier. So what that meant was the money that got transferred from stormwater infrastructure that was meant to increase the balance got used to make the first debt payment. So it's a good example of why it's nice to have the extra money there in case you need it, but it's also an example of, one where we are not hitting our target. So if we'd had extra money in the stormwater fund, this would have also been a good time to say, well, we'll just transfer more this year. As you know, we've already talked about, in order to cover all the projects that we've got going on right now, that money is going to cover what may be left in the bond fund. So a good thing to start working on or looking towards in the future years would be to say, you know, if we can transfer $500,000 or $600,000 instead of $480,000, we can start whittling away at that, getting a little bit closer to that target. It's not too worrisome. We have enough in our other funds that we're okay, and we're pretty sure we're going to be getting in that $1.5 million each year. We will always be able to have that $400,000 or $500,000 to transfer over. So it's not ideal, but it's also manageable. And so we think we can cover that over the next few years, but I wanted to at least bring it to your attention. All right. Now, onto the water fund. Let me fix that size again. All right, so, excuse me, on the water fund, we also have it separated out by strategic plan areas. So first of all, governance in terms of facilities and equipment. We have a couple of vehicles up for replacement, and we have an HVAC repair. The other item that we have in here in terms of governance for water services is a water loss analysis. As we've talked before at committee meetings, we are running into the point where we've realized that the amount of water that we're billing other people is not the same as the amount of water that we're paying for. And so we've checked for leaks, and we are, we've been doing some initial staff spot-checking and reviewing some things, trying to identify some accounts. We've been able to identify a few where there have been issues in terms of the way the bills were being calculated, but we felt that it would make a lot of sense to have an outside company come in and take a look at it. We've been able to, like I said, only identify a couple. If we can spend $20,000 and have them help us find, you know, our $300,000 or $400,000, that would be a good investment. So if we can spend $20,000 once to get $200,000 or $300,000 every year, that'd be a great, a great investment. So that's why we have that $20,000 listed there. And then, as you may imagine, the other major category for the water department is infrastructure, since it's included as a utility as part of infrastructure. We have $200,000 to abandon well 13. That's something that's been discussed at committee as well, that it would cost more to repair it and get it, keep it running. So we'll be looking at abandoning that well. We have some money set aside for the Burr Oak Water Main, a diesel tank replacement, so some design for the East Des Moines Water Main project, hydrant restoration, and then some design for Warwick and Washington and Linden water mains. And then we have the design for the water tower. As we've discussed before at committee, once we get that designed, we will then be using a loan done through the Illinois EPA, which has a very low interest rate, so we're able to get a loan for that at a much lower interest rate than we could for a typical bond. Any questions on water expenses?
I have a question.
Yeah.
If we're going, for the water mains, do we know when that's going to possibly be done, then? To replace those water mains? Is it going to be?
The ones that are listed here?
Yeah.
Our goal is to, over the next five years, to try to finish up all the ones. Reason that North Warwick is on there, reason North Washington is on there. North Warwick is a four-inch water main. It's one of the last four-inch water mains we have in town, so that's on there, not to mention that road needs to be resurfaced. Same thing with North Washington. That's the last street on the northwest side of town that hasn't been replaced, so we have to get in there and replace the water main first, then we can resurface it. So that's why those two are done. Our goal is, this year, to get Burr Oak done because we've had a lot of issues with Burr Oak. And then next year, if we can get Warwick and Washington designed this year, then do one or both, depending on the cost, to get that done next year.
Perfect.
Because we have had a few calls about North Washington, why is our street not, the only one, not done? And I get that. And so that would be top priority, and the North Warwick would be second.
It's good. At least we're getting it, you know, in stages.
Yeah, and that whole section will be done. This whole section's been done, and then if we get North Warwick done, that whole section will be done.
Great.
So, at least up to, yeah, up to Chicago Avenue.
Wonderful.
The mic is yours up there. Is there anything being set aside or planned for the removal, you know, there, there's an obligation to get rid of the lead in the community on it? Are we setting aside money to do that? Should we get stuck with that?
That's a very good question. One thing that we have found out, the Senate Bill 3080, which is in Don's state right now, is that the, that gets passed, what it is, is we have to do an inventory, it's due April 15th, which we're almost done with now. We send that to the state. Once they, we've identified our lead services, we have up to 10 years to remediate that lead service. Now, unfortunately, the way the law is written right now, we would have to remediate from the water main all the way into the house. Now, as you know, we're not responsible from the buffalo box into the house currently. That's all private property. So we would have to come up with some type of ordinance or work with our residents on cost sharing or, you know, I'm kind of waiting to see what other towns are going to do, you know, and see how that works out.
Actually, there's not a lot of confidence that that will...
Correct.
...by it is written, anyway, but...
Correct.
Planning for the worst case.
Right.
We will have time to do it.
Yeah, we have 10 years.
10 years, okay.
Yeah, so it's not, it's not an immediate thing, but it's something that we work towards, too. If we come across a lead service when we're doing our work, so we have a main break or a leak, we will replace that lead service right away, immediately, up to the buffalo box, because that's our responsibility currently, so.
Okay. Thank you.
One weird feature about lead services is they're actually safer if you leave them alone once you start cutting them and playing with them. That's when you get the bleach ate into the water system and everything, so.
Okay, then moving down to Public Works water revenues. We've got a few different pieces of the water revenues, but the main ones I want to focus on are the water sales. So as you'll recall, there's the two pieces, the operating and then the infrastructure piece, that's similar to what we've talked about before, about the ongoing revenues and the operating expenses. So in terms of operating, we have the $6.7 million that we would have gotten in based on the water rate we had at the beginning of this fiscal year. As you know, we just raised water rates, and with that, we have about $68,000 worth of additional revenue we expect to get in, based on the eight-cent increase. DuPage Water Commission did effective January 1st, and they did another six-cent increase that'll be effective May 1st. And so between those two, there's another, so $68,000 and then the $51,000 that we expect to get in terms of water revenues. As manager May pointed out at the beginning, we get that as water revenues because we also have to purchase the water. So it's an increase to us on the expenditure side, which is then borne out as also an increase to the village on the revenue side. So whatever cost increase for the water is simply passed on to the residents.
Hey, Spencer, what file are you on, on the computer? The last one was different than what you had in the paper. I'm just, I'm pulling along the computer and I can't find that.
So on the computer, if you're on the water tab, over on the right, if you click that link, that should take you there. Make sure you've got access to that. I think you do, but I'll make sure.
You mean the link actually in the water file?
Yeah, the link actually goes to the water file itself.
I got you, okay.
Let me make sure that's shared with you.
I guess I could just follow along here.
But I'll make sure you've got access to...
Just the next one? Oh, okay. That's all right. I mean, I got it in paper now. I was just curious.
Okay.
Thought I was missing something.
Oh, sorry about that. Yeah, so that is one that is a link to another document to cover the revenue piece. It's got a lot of the same expenditure information, but once it gets onto the revenues, it's got to jump to the other document.
Okay.
Sorry about that. So there's the operating piece of it. Then in addition to that, as you're aware, we have an infrastructure amount. So last year, we had raised rates, and from that generated about $700,000 worth. This year, we're looking at raising rates again, so the 40-cent increase that we've already passed to go into effect May 1st should generate another $285,000. And that's about the amount we expect to be generating each year as we have the same increase for the next several years, to be able to fund those infrastructure projects. So to be able to fund the loan payments we'll have on the water tower and those water mains that we just talked about. Going slightly further down on that, I believe still on the same page of the printed document, I've broken it out by the operating infrastructure, so you can see in terms of operating, our revenues do exceed our expenses, so we are, some of the money we get in terms of our regular operating before this infrastructure increase is able to go to help take care of infrastructure as well. And then we're pulling infrastructure from the fund balance and back to the B-02 Strategic Plan document on that fund summary, which is an earlier page. You can see we have, we expect to end, even though we're pulling money from fund balance, we expect to end with about 1.7 million left. We, our goal is to have 1.3 million, and so as a result, then we have about $400,000 more than our target. Any questions on the water fund? Okay. Back to the B-02, we're on the tab of specific purpose funds. So these are funds that are used for pretty much one thing, there's not as much splitting here as there was on the capital and projects fund. So the first section happens to be the vehicle replacement program. So we have up for replacement this year, one ambulance, a reserve ambulance. The next item I'm going to hold off, we'll come back to after we're done with the other vehicles. We've got one SUV with a plow for the fire department. We've got two police vehicles that are non-squads. These are items that we've held off for a couple of years because they could wait. We're now at the point where they need to be replaced. And then we have three patrol squads and converting the current squads into continued use. As you're aware, we use our patrol vehicles, once they're done on the front line for patrol, we use them in other village departments. And that's what's related to that item that I skipped past earlier, the one early patrol need, needed... for continued use. So, we have a village vehicle that a couple of years ago, we had, so several years ago, we purchased it new. A couple of years ago, we decided we don't need to replace this with a new vehicle. We should probably just use a continued use vehicle for it. However, our continued use vehicles for the three that we get each year are already needed in other departments. And we have recently found out that this vehicle that, again, used to be a brand-new purchase and got converted to continued use, needs to be replaced more quickly. And so, because of that, the plan then is to purchase four patrol cars this year with the expectation that next year, we'll be purchasing two patrol cars. The main reason for that is so that we can use one of the current patrol cars to replace a continued use vehicle. The other options that we looked at and considered were, number one, just buying a new vehicle for it, which didn't seem to make a lot of sense because we didn't want to spend 20 or $30,000 more. It's, makes a lot more sense just to spend that money a year earlier. And then, the other option would be to take one of the non-squads that don't work for police and see if we can squeeze out another one or two years in another department. But then, at that point, you've paid to convert two different vehicles. So, it really made the most sense when we looked at all the different ways. The lowest cost was to say, let's do one extra police car this year and then two the following year. So, that's why, that's a slight deviation from our current, from our typical plan. Okay. Any questions on vehicles?
With the extra in the squads and then the, the non-patrols, is the, is the SUV with the plow something that, that we can put off that?
So, the SUV with the plow, excuse me, is for a different department. So, that's for the fire department. And it is something that our current SUV that has the plow, that's able to take care of that is, so it's already been used at the front line for fire. And now, it's being used sort of as a reserve vehicle. And it's having some major issues and needing to be replaced. So, I don't think that it's one that we're able to hold off on at this point, is what the mechanic has indicated. I don't know if...
And the plow can't be put on another existing SUV we have or anything like that?
So, the issue is the, when we used to buy all Tahos, they could handle the plow. You just needed to get a plow package with it. And we did that for some vehicles. The challenge is the new vehicles we're getting now for the police aren't able to
Explorers.
The explorers aren't able to handle the plow easily. The Tahoe would be able to and can also pull some of the vehi, some of the trailers that they need. So, for their light generators and those kind of things, they need the heavier duty vehicle. So, they've had the Tahos that used to be their fire department's frontline vehicles. We started replacing all their frontline vehicles with the same, a little bit lower cost vehicles that police were getting for their Explorer. And that is great for most of their use, but there are some specific purposes that need the heavier duty.
So, it leaves the one vehicle and that one's got to go. So, it has to be replaced with that duty.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. In the IMRF fund, we are continuing to have a, a list, the same thing we've had last year as well, for $500,000. We have a balance in IMRF where we don't have as much in there as we could. So, it's generating some additional interest. But if you put in the money and then there is a decrease in the market, then you end up getting a larger share of the decrease associated with us as opposed to the other funds. So, we've talked about it and it's sort of one of those things where we're in connection, communication with IMRF. And at some point, it may make sense to put that $500,000 into cover of the balance, but they've said not to jump in and do it right away. So, we've got the money in there if it seems to be a good time to make that switch. We have some equip employees and facilities in terms of DEA fund. We've got the Fire Quint Lease Payment, the Vehicle Replacement Fund. We have our typical IMRF payments listed there. In our TIF, Central Business District TIF, we have 57,500, which is our estimate for what we'll be paying the school. As you're aware, we pay the school about 25% of the TIF revenue generated, which they have to use for improvements in that TIF district, which would be Manning School. So, capital improvements for that. Then, we've got our social security payments. And then, there's some money in the DEA fund for some minor administrative items. The large planned expenditure in the DEA program is that they can fund the replacement officer. So, as you know, we have an officer assigned to the DEA Task Force. So, the first roughly $73,000 we get in, I think, part of, that's for a couple of different programs. But the first amount of money that comes in goes to fund the officer's salary. So, a replacement officer, what it costs us to hire a new officer to cover that one going to the DEA Task Force. And that's the biggest piece of it. There's also some other administrative expenses in there as well. We have listed about $130,000 worth of professional TIF services in the Central Business District TIF. We will potentially be using that either for that or for development, payments to developers. And really, it's basically to get it so that we're saying, the amount of money we have coming in on the TIF, we can spend that much. We don't want to plan on spending more. If we do spend any more money in that TIF for any other projects, then we have to pull that money from somewhere else, which would be the excess reserve from the general fund. So, as we talked about, we have about 2 million there. However, as you're aware, in the downtown TIF, we've got a couple of different projects involved. We have one project where we at least have some initial estimates. But because we don't have any official documentation or any letter of understanding or anything to that extent, we're not planning to budget for those costs. But from the items that I know the board's aware of and has been discussed, probably a large portion of that 2 million will be going to cover some of those costs. In the Southwestmont Business District TIF, we do have some costs that have been identified and are established with the memorandum of understanding. So, as you'll recall, we had transferred some money from Convention Tourism and Capital Projects in this current budget year. So, the year that we're currently in, we transferred about that 2.8 million into there. And so, we're planning to spend that next year. And then, we do have $9,500, which will get two speed centuries from the DEA fund. So, we do have that. And there's part of traffic enforcement, which is in the infrastructure category. So, any questions about any of these pieces?
On the speed sensors, are those going to be permanently mounted somewhere? Or are those mobile units? Or?
No.
Those will be mobile units?
Mobile.
Even when they're mobile, we, we attach them to something. I mean, they're semi-permanent while we're using them, but they can be moved to other locations.
Right. It's powered, so...
It's not like a trailer, but it's, but we reuse them anywhere we want.
Right. Not like the one that's permanent on Cass. I was just curious if they're going to be...
It's actually the same item. We just choose to leave that one on Cass Avenue for that duty.
On that note, could we choose to leave one on Washington Street by the school where we get so many complaints from the residents there?
Me, over by Miller?
By Miller, absolutely.
When we do things like by Miller or anywhere, when we get the complaint, they put them up there and monitor it. It actually does measurements too. It's not just feedback. So, it collects the data information. And if the, depending on the scope of the problem, they'll, they'll leave it there or they'll reuse it somewhere else.
Yeah. If, if they were getting to where they were sitting in the storeroom versus being on Washington Street, I'd much rather see them on Washington Street. I would just have it.
Agreed.
Yeah.
They're well-used. Yeah.
All right. So, any questions on any of the big ticket items, any of the things we've covered thus far?
Good.
Okay. And we're going to move on to the general fund, which is the operating fund, which covers the day-to-day work. So, on this sheet, you'll notice the columns are a little bit different. We start off with a column called base amount. So, that's that base budget that we talked about, which is basically to continue current operations. We then have a consideration request. And then, the next three columns are what is included in the budget. So, the amount that is one-time ongoing. And then, the final column is what's the total amount included in the budget. So, in terms of governance, we have in our commissions, our police and fire selection. We see that base amount. In community development, you see the costs associated with their base amount for administration. We have $3,000 for adjudication costs for the hearing officer. You'll see adjudication also referenced a little bit lower once we get to IT. There was a request to convert a GIS position to a full-time position for $28,000. As you can see, there's not funds in the budget to do that at this point. So, that's, we're not doing that currently. As you will recall from last year, we had just granted a specific general amount for GIS and had said, oh, let's go ahead and do consultants. The Community Development Department is able to identify that we can get a little bit more done through internal staff. So, we initially had started with using a GIS intern. And we've now since created that to a part-time position. But they've been able to take the total funds granted for GIS and simply move them around in terms of whether we're planning to pay a consultant or planning to do it in-house to be able to fund the in-house staff. So, I wanted to mention that too, since that's a change from last year. We also have some money in there for grant writing assistance. We're hopeful that will help generate even more money in terms of the grants that we are able to get. And then, we have $10,000 in there for graphic design services for community development.
Spencer?
Yes.
On your consideration request, that's from each department?
Yes. So, the consideration request is the amount requested by each department.
And then, that includes all the requests? And you're showing prioritize on which ones?
Yes.
Yep. The particular one, while it's highlighted, but what it was actually, that's, you see everybody's request, whether the information has since been, the information's not removed. But if the, the request is not in the current budget, that last column is showing you what's reflected in the budget. So, that's showing you that they asked for that.
Yeah.
That's what it's worth and that it's
And it shows you what...
It's currently not in there.
But is, with the next department, is it prioritized?
Not, in some cases, but not necessarily.
Okay. Yeah. So, this just defaults in order to alphabetical order. You can see, we've had to prioritize some requests from some departments. But in general, the biggest prioritization is if it's, was not included in the budget, it was considered to be a little bit lower priority than the items that got included in the budget.
Essentially by me.
But, but it did involve departments prioritizing.
Yeah. So, I mean, okay, good question. And I should follow up with there. There's nothing, there is nothing in any of the requests that's, that's superfluous or, you know, not worthy of consideration. It's just that the requests add up to more than what we have. And then, that's where I go through and put that in here. So, the, only because this one's highlighted, the tech was in there. It's actually, we have a GIS tech and we, and actually, it's been here a week, I think, or two weeks. And, but as a part-time tech, part-time employee, this request was to make that full-time. But it was just hired here in April and was a, you know, part of the decision-making. But, you know, maybe next year, as far as a full-time status. We have the tech because of the whole ERP and that's all being implemented. And that's going to take a while to, you know, put together as well. And, but then, there's the counterargument to that too, is that we've had more than one person in that position already since we started it. So, we lose them quickly as they go find other full-time work. So, it's to, you know, they're all difficult decisions, but that was one too.
So, Steve, that's something that could change come mid-year if we could, we could re-
And we would-
It could be a non-budget item, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So...
Certainly.
Boy, this finance department, boy, they didn't request anything.
No. So, the main change in finance was, as we discussed at a prior committee, we had money set aside in professional services to go towards attempt for, during the ERP transition. And with the retirement of an employee, we're able to utilize a little bit of a reorganization to use some of that money in terms of salary costs. So, with that, there was no need to request anything additional. Want to say, our audit costs went up by a couple hundred, maybe a thousand dollars. And it was just not deemed worth the board's time to worry about that. So, now, I've told you. And now, I've spent your time on it anyway. All right. Moving on to fire. So, in governance, which is again, equipment and facilities, you can see a request for some equipment that is needed. So, we've got, and you can see this seven, eight, and nine. This was the fire department's priorities. When we get to the, looking at it briefly by department, you can see all the priorities listed in order. Right now, you're just seeing the pieces of their priorities that fit into the governance section. So, this was the prioritization in terms of power cut for the ambulance 1835, an upgrade to a Magna Grip exhaust system, and replacing of aging cardiac monitors. In the HR admin and legislation, they've got, again, the base budget things, some of the increases that are new this year. And I don't know why they're bolded, not intentionally. They just are. So, boardroom chairs. I'm sure you're probably excited about those. But that was not the intent for bolding them. We also have-
Requested those. I mean, are they for all of them out here or just these at the-
Oh, these, you're probably not noticing, but as they fall apart and things break, I'm taking parts off this chair and repairing those chairs. So...
I lost the real couple months.
Even the mayor's casters are a different color. So, he...
Care.
But anyhow, that, it's just the age of this, these pieces here.
I'm going to pull-
So, we're worse shape than others.
I'll be like Belorid and pull it out of, get rid of Simski's.
Then, these can all go to Public Works, right?
Yeah.
Right. They'd love to have them. These would be a huge improvement for the government.
Yeah, right.
That's why I ask. It's, it seems like other departments-
Yeah. Continued use chairs program.
Yeah. Well, I think they would welcome them.
Three a week, three a year.
Three a year. And then, under that, Spencer, I assume that's Westmont First, that business score?
Yes. So, that is something that Westmont First had identified last year, kind of right towards the end of the budget process, as something that they wanted to try. And it's basically, I don't think we've spent the full 2,000, but it's setting aside money. So, there's a business score class that local businesses can attend. And they coordinate going to that class with the chamber. And then, we're covering that if they attend the class. So, it's kind of like a scholarship type of a program. It was something that we did as a one-time thing last year to see how it worked. We had a business that was interested and took advantage of it. And so, we've carried it forward to turn it into an ongoing thing, assuming there are no objections to that. Is that, you're welcome to comment on that in more detail if-
Yeah. What it is, it's a, instead of creating a program and trying to develop something here, Larry Forsberg, through the Chamber and his connections, found this program that offered guest speakers for new businesses to give them the aid, you know, can, you know, make a strategic plan, make a financial plan, set some goals, all these things. So, he found this program that he could take local businesses and make a recommendation and say, you know, we have a scholarship available if you'd like to attend that class or that workshop, really what it is. It was already created. And it was something that we offered in, in our efforts to help businesses if they want to take advantage of it. And it's an annual thing. If he comes across somebody that would need that or he felt it would help them, then he could make that recommendation. And then, there'd be scholarship money there for them.
And that's open to all Westmont businesses or Chamber members? Or how's that work?
Well, it was, it was new businesses and a, you know-
Businesses only?
We kind of left it to his discretion. But, you know, it, he can give you the details of what the class types were, where you can see if that fits the need. But it was, you know, we had all these, it came to that thing where we were disappointed, you know, we put up an warning and then the business was gone because they really didn't have a financial plan or a solid business
Mm-hmm.
Plan. And this was an effort to help those people develop their business better by having some education that way. And hopefully, they'd stay around a little bit longer.
Right. How much, like the 2,000, how many businesses?
That'd be four.
Four.
Yeah. It's up to $500.
And the program's called SCORE? That's the program?
Right. Right. Yeah. I think it was held in North Central.
So, I mean, I don't think there's any official determination that says it's only for new businesses. I think if an existing business was interested in it and wanted to do it and we, you know, hadn't spent the money, I don't-
Right.
Imagine we would oppose them doing it. There's no official policy that precludes it, that just wasn't the intent. Is that right?
Right. Exactly.
Yeah. So, last year, we had said, you know, we didn't have, we had kind of already gotten to the point, you know, when the idea came up, we'd kind of gotten to the point where all the revenues and expenses were kind of, all the operating revenues were being used by the operating expenses. And so, at that point, it was, we have some extra money in our reserve. We can cover it as a one-time. But then, we wanted to bring it to the board before moving it into the annual piece. And that's why it's here. We have contract negotiations coming up. And so, our legal fees are going to be going up as we use firm for that.
Going on now, actually.
Yes. They have just started. Yep. So, we, based on typical experience on those years, our legal fees are up by about 30,000. We have money in the budget to convert a part-time HR generalist into a full-time position. In IT, we have additional $16,000 for adjudication. So, the- In IT, we have additional $16,000 for adjudication, so this is to get a software program for adjudication, as well as to cover the cost for videotaping. Majority of that cost is for the adjudication software. We do not currently have any revenues for adjudication, any extra revenues coming in for adjudication, we just have it assuming that our revenue stream continues as it has been. If after a year or two, we see that we're getting extra revenues from adjudication, which we expect may happen, then we can increase our revenues. But at this point, we're simply budgeting the expenses for more of our purposes, less to get the revenue and more of just to make the process more legit, more, better for us logistically. The next two items are for Contracted Security Operations Center. So the first list, Phase One and Two, that $22,000 that was requested but not included in the budget, was the idea of having an outside third-party come in and do an analysis of our network and our security systems. We think, as Manager May mentioned, nothing that's on this list is a bad idea, so it would be a good idea to do, but in terms of prioritization, when we were looking at the money, we decided this is something we could do, that portion of it ourselves in-house to do that analysis. The second portion is an ongoing cost for ongoing Operations Center monitoring. So what happens is, our server will be sending logs of activity to an outside system that can monitor it, so that if there are hackers or people do attempt to get into our system, we can catch them more quickly and can make sure we mitigate the damage they do. So it's something where it's, you hope that you spent the money and didn't need to, but if you don't spend the money, then you'll potentially wish you had if a situation comes up. So that's what that cost is.
Exactly. Money you wish you won't have to need to benefit from?
Yes, like auto insurance.
Yeah.
We also have in here a $60,000 for ERP additional server memory. So our server needs, we may need to add some additional memory to be able to handle the ERP system to hit its level specifications. So we think we can make it work with less than that potentially, but to get to the levels what they're suggesting would be an extra approximately $60,000. The next item of the 36,000 is in connection with Dugis, so County Centered Records Management System. We don't really have much of a choice with this, the entire county's moving this direction, we need to do that, so that's, that cost. The $15,000 is working with conversion from our current document management system to Laserfish. When we consolidated with Addison, the current document system we had wouldn't allow our police records to retrieve the information they needed to for that conversion, so we needed to utilize Laserfish. I believe you're familiar with that, probably from committee meetings a year or two ago. So this 15,000 is to start helping staff be able to get other documents into Laserfish, so we don't have to, long-term, have the two different systems. And so that, as we get new documents, we can store them in Laserfish, as opposed to paying an outside service to scan them into our old system. So we're able to set up some workflows to make that scanning easier for our staff to be able to get them into this new system, to be tagged in that new system. We have 10,000 for Police Department Evidence Encryption Storage Software. Nope, sorry, I skipped one. So we have that 6,000 for that. The other option that I just inadvertently skipped over is $10,000 for Forecast Analytics. So this is something that is connected with the Finance Department in terms of long-range budgeting. There's a system that can do those long-range projections to be able to say, looking at the different revenue streams, projecting how it will come out long-term, be able to look at both revenues and expenditures. One of the things in the strategic plan that we've been talking about has been the idea of, let's try to look a little bit more long-term, instead of a budget for one year, it's good to have a detailed budget for one year, but maybe we could look at having a, you know, very broader general budget, but look out five or 10 years to say, if trends continue as they are, what kind of issues are we looking at long-term? So it's that 10,000, we've talked about the evidence. And then this 23,000 for telephone system replacement. Sorry, back up. So there's a Sentinel Wire Network Assessment. This is something where we had been having a little bit of computer issues in terms of speed, those have pretty much been a, you know, and in terms of logging, and those have pretty much been addressed, but at one point, we said, you know, if we need to, we can have somebody else come take a look at the network and see if there's any things we need to do with it. We think we've been able to fix all the issues on our own, so we don't think we need to spend that 12,000, and so while it never hurts to have somebody else's opinion, we think we're in a good enough spot that we don't need to spend that $12,000 at this point. The $23,000 for the telephone system replacement is that our telephone service provider, the company that handles that, was bought by another company. The new company is saying the equipment we have is past their expected useful life, and they won't maintain it anymore, and won't guarantee that our phones will work, and if any problem happens to it, they can't necessarily fix it in a timely manner. So because of that, we need to update our equipment, and that costs 23,000. So again, that's not something we really have much of a choice regarding. We have our pass-through amounts. You can see our Fire Protection Fund, 2%, and then our Police Pension Fund, that pass-through. In the Police section, you can see Equip Employees and Facilities, just items in their base budget, no extra cost or extra items. In Public Works, still in terms of Governance, we have a, there was a request for a Civil Engineer of 78,000, again, a good request for valid reasons, but at this point, we said we can't afford that additional ongoing cost, so that was put on hold, at least for now. We do have that 40,000 for the Horticulture List. We have 10,000 for doing standard detailed revisions. We've got some equipment replacements that are listed, and then we have some facilities improvement. As I mentioned before, we had some, about $8,000 worth of duct cleaning at Westmont Center. There's another 24,000 of duct cleaning to handle other village buildings. So that's something that, we received a request to look at cleaning ducts, and so we ran the price, so that's about $24,000 for that. We have some largely landscape improvements, but some other miscellaneous improvements at Fire Department for 12,000. We have $42,000 listed in the budget for LED conversions for village buildings, yes.
The Fire Department landscaping, is that those sprouted railroad ties going down to the, thank God.
It's some of that, so it's, yeah.
That's, that's how lived its useful life. There's nothing there but the rods that hammered into the ground.
Yeah, so at this point, we're looking at a little bit of that, I mean, that amount isn't going to take care of all of those issues. We're looking at doing a little bit of landscaping to make it look a little bit better, and then we're also looking at getting a landscape designer to look at kind of long-term, what options are there in terms of that, that whole section, because that whole section has some major issues, as you mentioned.
We're going to paint the rods.
You know, I just, I'm lucky enough to be going to the Fire Academy on, like, Tuesday nights that are free.
Okay.
It's awful dark in there. I don't know if there's anything burned out, but that might be something-
We'll put up one of those EMA towers.
We might have to, you might need increased lighting, is really, as we came out of the meeting, it was dark.
It's to look at it.
Yep. So the LED conversions, and then some minor improvements at Police and Village Hall. The, excuse me, in terms of Governance, as we've done in prior years, we've grouped the village-wide increases into one section, so we can talk about them all at once. So the current budget includes agreed-upon increases, health insurance, which we're listing as a nominal $1,000 increase. As you know, we're shifting health insurance plans, so we don't have a good idea on what total cost for the year will be yet. We're, since they're, since the amounts are telling us we need to put into it are less than what we have been putting into it, we're hopeful that expenses will be less. Since we don't know how much it is, we're conservatively just keeping expenses about the same going forward. And then we have a potential wage increase listed there of 2.5%, which is about $307,000.
Does that include FOP?
So it includes the costs for that at this point, though that contract is still under negotiations. So we don't know for sure what that amount will be. Okay, any questions so far in Governance?
Sure, what the hell.
Thanks.
I'm the Horticulturist, that's really kind of a trade-off from what we used to give to the Park District, right? Which is going to be gone now, right?
Yes, that's-
That program has stopped completely.
Yes, that's a great point.
Trade-off.
So we used to pay for the benefit of the public, we used to pay the Park District for use of their landscape architect, who is no longer acting as a landscape architect.
Is that what you're asking? Yeah, right, when we used to, is this like a trade-off for that? Because basically, we've lost our-
Yeah, and so there's the landscape architect services, it's, we've got more, we've creating areas now that's going to require more maintenance, and the reason I ask is because we intend, as this develops, we're going to start pulling away the contractual lawn mowing services as well as, as that can fit in. So we're, you know, we've got hopes, you know, in whittling that back, but not yet, but-
Are those numbers similar to what we were paying the Park District with the, with the?
Yeah, it's pretty close.
Pretty close?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was kind of like, as used, as needed, and we did have a 20, we, for a while, we paid a direct, we paid a fraction of that salary of that employee, right?
One point, 50%.
I think at one point, it was like, yeah, but that particular individual's got different responsibilities there now.
He's too good to do this now.
He is busy with others.
More of us leaving him alone than it is, you know.
Well, and we'll have more control over this situation.
Yes, yep.
Total.
Yes. Other questions in the Governance area? Okay, moving on to Identity and Image. So again, we have large amounts that are in the base budget, which is largely assigning portions of salaries and other expenses into this category. One item I do want to point out is the Property Maintenance Inspector that you see listed there. That was a position that we converted during this budget, or again, we talked about this at committee. Due to the retirement of an, of a part-time employee, we were able to convert that position into a full-time position, and as Community Development looked at the costs in the budget, by promoting, by increasing the hours for that individual and what that picked up, in addition to picking up additional duties, what it freed up some other employees to be able to do some of the plan reviews and items that had been outsourced to a contractor. When you add up the extra costs for conversion to part, from part-time to full-time, netted against the reduced cost to the third-party contractor, we ended up saving just over $9,000 by making that change. So I wanted to point it out, it is something we've already done, it's a change we've made, but because it was a cost savings, we wanted to mention that to the board. In terms of requests for considerations, you'll see in here some requests that were generated in the Fire Department as part of creating a safe environment for that portion of the identity and image. So with that, we had, there was initially a request for a special service position, I believe that's also been discussed briefly at committee before, so we have some individuals who are no longer, are either retiring or are no longer able, based on their full-time employment, are no longer able to work as firefighters for the village, but there's other things that they can be doing, especially, you know, as this, as it comes with assisting in special events, in going to take care of other jobs and doing some training, those kind of things where we need some assistance. Ideally, it would be nice to get to where we can average roughly 20 hours a week with that position, which would be about $20,000. When we came back and looked at how much money we had available, this was one where, instead of eliminating the program entirely, we determined, well, we have some people doing it right now, makes sense to do sort of a modified version of the program. So instead of the 20,800 that was, you can see in the consideration request, what's actually included in the budget is 10,400. We also have some increased incentives for weekends and daytimes to be able to help fill some of those hard-to-fill shifts in the Fire Department. And then we have an adjustment to the 457 contribution for a similar purpose. So as you'll recall, a couple of years ago, we set up a contribution into Firefighters' 457 Plan. As you know, they don't have pension plans through the village, they're not part of either a Fire Pension Plan or an IMRF, so we're, we set up a formula for matching their contribution, but not paying them any more than $1 per shift hour that they worked. And that's been good and well-received. The thing that we're considering now is, again, getting employees to work more hours as we have some employees that aren't able to work, that are prohibited from their, by their full-time departments from working. It's been getting tough to fill shifts, so you'll notice that in terms of the incentives, and also for this 457 contributions, this, so the idea is, if employees work over 1,000 hours, then we're able to give them a little bit more, so it's not just $1 per hour, it bumps up to an extra 25 cents if they're working more than the 1,000 hours. Initially, we were thinking it would be ideal to give them twice that, so a higher amount, so that, again, that was the request of 36,000, but then, once we looked at what money was available, we determined that 18,000 made sense. Again, it's not ideal, but it's what we can cover, prioritize there. We also have an additional Fire Inspector for 20,800. As you'll recall, this is something that, a couple of years ago, we added a Fire Inspector to the budget, and then a year, so maybe three or four years ago, we added a Fire Inspector to the budget. A couple of years ago, they came back and said, okay, in terms of making cuts, they can, they could cut that position. Since that time, we've had more alarm issues and more things that need to be dealt with by these inspectors. And so because, and as you know, we're also getting more development that is occurring, which, again, is a good thing, so the demand for that inspector is increasing again. So we reduced it when we didn't have the need for it, now that there's more of a need for it, it's coming back into the budget again. Final item, the EMS Paramedic Pay Increase is, again, something that would be a good thing to do, and was something that I believe we discussed with the Village Board at committee level, about, you know, wanting to be able to get their pay increased a little bit more to get more competitive, to make it easier to get people to come to Westmont. Unfortunately, in terms of costs, that was something that we didn't have the ability to fund at that point, and so that has not been funded this year in the budget. Still a consideration for the future. The final item there is our 2% EMS contract increase for paramedic services, so with the company, we're obligated to do that 2% increase, so that we don't really have a choice on. Yes?
Is there a direct effect to the paramedic staff chief? We're going to lose anybody, you think?
Probably that 28866 is that we tried, first tried to stay competitive in special Westmont, we had the ice starting pace, we called it the medics in Westmont, and the last few years or so, that started paying, we're down to 23,000.
Okay.
So that's why we came forward, like, and tried to raise that, started to pay that because of other contractors.
Thank you. Okay, we've got general costs for community engagement as part of the base budget. In terms of community outreach, we have a little bit of an increase, just a minor amount for MDM software licensing. We've got one increase in the Police Department for parking meters. As you're aware, the metered parking that we have is based on quarters and quarters only, and we have occasionally received people coming in and saying, can I pay on my smartphone? And we say, no, you have to use quarters. And so for the last couple of years, we've had another company coming in and saying, you know, we could replace your meters and let people pay on their smartphones, but we need a minimum dollar amount, and that minimum dollar amount they need is right about the total amount we typically get from customers, so that's about $3,000. So basically, our expenses would be going up 3,000, or our revenues would be coming down 3,000, whichever way you want to look at it, but it would be a net cost to us of about $3,000 to get smarter meters, I guess. So more progressive meters, if you want to look at it that way.
But does that make it an either-or?
We can look into that. I think, I think the one company that has approached us, does it primarily on smartphone, but I think when we look at it, we'd want to make sure there's some way that they can pay for it without-
Because that's my other question, because I don't carry a smartphone, so, you know, that doesn't mean I'm brilliant, but-
You still use a credit card, though, couldn't you?
Yeah, I believe so.
Like Chicago?
Yeah.
I mean, they don't have any of that except quarters anymore down there.
Yeah, I, I think there's a lot of different options out there, and we would make sure there's another method besides just a smartphone.
Obviously, if you get away from the quarters, you eliminate somebody picking up those quarters.
Yes.
I assume that the smartphone and the, and the credit card technology is, is monitored through a computer or something?
Yes.
I don't even use a card anymore, I use the hand.
Yeah, so that would also-
The value there.
Yes, the other benefit is it would free up that person who currently collects them to do other things.
And how many people carry cash now?
Right. Yeah, I was trying to explain to somebody who wanted to just go downtown for a day, I'm like, yeah, there's metered parking, it's just over there, you need quarters, and they just looked at me like, quarters?
What's it?
Yeah, you know, little coins. We also have issues with those- We also have issues with those meters occasionally jamming or freezing shut. And so sometimes that makes people frustrated, too.
So I guess, will we get a clarification on that? Is that... Because it almost seems like to go to the no quarters, as Trustee Nero says, like Chicago is, is almost a big savings to us when we take the manpower away from collecting the quarters.
That's not true.
And they do use quarters.
Chicago has coins.
Oh, they're both.
It has dollars. It has credit cards. It has apps. It's... They're all-inclusive.
So you'd have to still check them?
It's like one box per...
We'd still have to check them occasionally.
Still have to check them then, huh?
Yeah.
And is that what those are going to be similar to, as ones in Chicago, is... Do you know?
At this point, we don't know for sure. We just have some rough estimates. So it's one of those things that if the board wasn't interested in moving in that direction at all, we didn't want to do very much with it.
Yeah.
If you're okay with it, then we're happy to look into it in more detail and find the actual vendor.
That's the same guy you asked about the parking regulations overnight, wasn't it?
So the question... Which one was the question, I guess?
What kind of parking meters? What are the... The features of the ones we're looking at?
These are mainly just the pay with your smartphone things. They have the option for the coins also, but I don't know about the credit cards or the dollar bills.
Okay.
So there still would be the need to collect the coins if they were still utilized, which we do have approximately probably on a daily basis, maybe six, seven, eight people that still use the coin-fed machines out of...
How many... How many of those would there be? In Chicago, they've gone to one box for a block instead of going individual?
Yeah, so these would be the individuals' style. There are other options that, yeah, we could research more into that option of where you have the box where it's a number and you plug in the number and pay that way.
No, I like to speak on that because I have actually looked into that of long a time ago and since, that the difference here is, well, it's... We're only talking about the daily-use parking. So the... It requires now at least a drive-by to see that all the meters are active and that they've paid in some format. And occasionally, you've got the manual process where you go out and you have to empty all the coins out of it, take it to the bank, do all that. That doesn't have to be done every day. When you have a box that's at the end of the station and they put their money there or somehow pay, that's convenient, economical, and great, but that requires daily attention. And it requires the daily attention to someone to get out, look which ones were paid, and then go back and inventory, you know, that those vehicles are in those spaces or if you're...
I thought that was all electronic.
There's vehicles in spaces that don't have money.
I thought that was all electronic. I feel like if you don't pay your meter in Chicago, that Department of Revenue van is there in no time.
But that's one where you pay and you do it, and then you get a printed receipt and you put that in your windshield so they can see on the vehicle.
Oh, that's different. Yeah, okay.
So there's... It's just the daily attention versus the automation.
Yeah. And at this point, we haven't selected a vendor. And I think before we do, we would want to get a lot of these questions answered and come back to you at either a Public Safety Committee or an Administration/Finance Committee, depending on which one's closer to, once we've got some of these identified. But we know we've got at least one quote from somebody who says they can do it for about $3,000. And so we wanted to confirm with the board that you are interested in spending money primarily to update... Update it, make it, you know, to moving to the next century.
It's time.
Or to this century, I guess, now at this point.
How many parking meters would you be... Are we using right now?
Currently, are we using?
Yeah, I mean, down...
Yeah, there's approximately 30, I think.
Yeah, I think 26 is the number.
It's around that, 25, 30, around that. And only... There's only about probably around six, seven, eight of them that get used on a normal basis, on a daily basis.
Yeah. And then you go all the way to the West End, and there's one or two that are actually closer to the Fairview Station that are used.
They say our meters are cheaper.
All this for six meters.
It's possible we may generate more revenue if we have these updated meters, too. So I just love that all the discussion is on items under $5,000.
You know that. I mean, you throw it around millions, but then all the questions come on the $3,000 meters. So that's great.
Very important, parking meters.
Yeah. Exciting. All right. So Fire Department improvements, landscaping, maintenance, this is a little bit more of what we talked about before about the landscaping. In terms of trees, it is 5,000. We can spend more time on it if you want to. Trust you, Barry. No? Okay. But it was a good comment, though. Yeah. It's kind of... Okay. All right. Additional tree trimming. So this is something, we've had a little bit of money in the tree trimming budget on an ongoing basis, and it just hasn't been enough to kind of keep up with the tree demand. Most of the money in our tree budget lately has been for removing trees and then planting new trees. We do have $70,000 for planting new trees that were removed as a result of the Emerald Dash Board. But we also have $70,000 in terms of additional tree trimming. Part of that is to cover the amount of trees that now need trimmed because, again, our staff has been focused largely on the removal of trees. We need to get cut up in terms of the tree trimming and be able to keep it going on an ongoing basis. So we've been saying, oh, we're spending all our money to take down trees. It's a one-time thing. Emerald Dash Board, that's all it's related to. And now, at this point, we're saying, okay, we've been spending all the money on that. We haven't been able to trim the trees. Now we need to start trimming the trees, and we need to be able to keep doing that. So instead of calling it a one-time trimming lots of trees, we're now just admitting it's going to keep happening.
And that's something we outsource?
Yes, I believe that's the intention.
That's...
We do some of both.
I'm sorry.
We're not going to cut any of your trees there.
This one's up to the podium.
Hi, Mary Gabriel from Westmont. Question is, the village has, over the last couple of years, planted quite a number of trees. You've got $70,000 in this year's budget. Is there any money in the budget to help water the trees and do the initial tree maintenance so that we're not replacing them on a frequent basis? Because when there's more drought situations, all these new trees we planted are struggling.
So that is something that's been looked at by the Public Works Department. Mike can talk about that if we want to. But the basic answer is I think we're looking at rearranging our seasonals and how they're currently used. We don't think we need any additional money. We're simply going to reassign some duties.
You've got $90,000 equipment.
The gator bags.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay. Horticulturist, he's going to do it.
We do have gator bags that we put on all the new trees. We do water. And Spencer did make the point that we do have staff that's going to be designed, not only the watering of flowers, it's going to be watering all the new trees. And you'll also see in the budget, we have a request for a new water tank. And that's supposed to also help with... So we could have two people, two crews going out and water. Some can water the flowers, some can water the trees. So, you know, last year, we only had one group out there doing it. Now we're trying to have it where we'll have two groups going out when we do plant the new trees. So we'll have two groups out there doing it to maintain so that... Especially in the summertime, because John's getting ready to start planting the trees now. Right... Obviously, right now is a good time to start planting. But you're right, when it gets hot and dry, we need to be constantly planting, you know, watering those trees. And we do have pretty good results. There's very few trees that we ever have to replace after we've planted them. But there are some that just don't make it. And that's not always because we didn't water them, it's just for other reasons.
So we had that conversation the other night at the Environmental Committee, and thank you, Mary, for bringing that up. Those trees require a minimum of the gator bag full 20 gallons a week. That would... John said that would be an absolute minimum. And not being able to rely on the homeowners to do that or rely on the weather. It was a bad year last year, it was dry. And I thought, you know, my backyard is muddy and everything like that. Now, that's enough water, and it really isn't. So while you think it's wet out now, it's not even close to what that tree needs. So we're already in a dry period for the trees that we planted over the last couple of years.
And when we do plant new trees in front of the person's house, even though it's in the parkway, we do give them a notice to ask them to please water. But again, you know, not everybody's going to have time or, you know, to go out there and do that. So we do have a list of ones we freshly planted, brand-new ones, and we go out there and water them consistently, definitely through the whole first year. And then second year, depending on how well they did the first year, we'll go back and do it. But we do leave gator bags on those trees.
So three-year commitment?
Correct. Yeah. But the first year, we definitely make sure we hit it hard. And then after that, we just go by case by case, and, you know, we try to water as much as we can.
Didn't you guys mention at the last Public Works that you were maybe looking for some type of incentive to the homeowners via water bill break or something that would help encourage that, too?
Sure. Yeah, we haven't come up with an idea yet, but that is something we're looking into. You're right.
I have a question.
Just...
Are we close to getting rid of all these trees with the Emerald Dash Board?
Yes, we're really close. Actually, we're done taking them down.
Okay.
There are some that we have identified that have EAB, but they're not bad enough that need to be taken down. So John's got a list, and he's going around and he checks them on a regular basis and see how they're doing. But the trees are still alive. They're still growing. They're still, you know, they're still okay. So we don't want to take down trees that are still thriving to a point. If they start turning bad, then we'll replace them. But all the ones that are... That were, you know, dying or dead, they're all gone.
Yeah.
And this last $70,000 are the ones that we have to replace the ones we've taken down. So even after this year, we'll still keep planting new trees as part of our Tree USA program. But this will... Will pretty much... And, you know, we'll be pretty much done with the whole program, EAB program.
It's terrible because it was just devastating.
Yes, it was. There was a lot of subdivisions, you know, especially Ashford.
Yeah.
And there's some other ones that really, you know, Oakwood, that really got hit hard.
Yeah.
And, you know, John's done a great job diversifying on the species that he's replanting. So, you know, in the future, hopefully, this, something like this will never happen. I can't guarantee that, obviously.
Just what we replant, I mean, we require that of any development or are conscious of it.
And it's just terrible because you look at the scope of how bad it was. It's... It was devastating.
Yeah, Ash was a cheap tree to plant, and it was one of the cheapest trees. So landscapers tend to go with the cheapest cost, obviously. We don't... We don't allow them to do that anymore. They have a list that they can go off of and they can pick, but it's very diverse.
Should have... Should have learned that diversity lesson with the Dutch Elm issue and then...
Okay.
And with that $70,000, I think it was reported that this year, they're going to get like a bigger tree. Didn't... Wasn't that mentioned to us that they're going to try and get something a little bigger than what we have in the past?
Right. We're trying to look at, you know, the diameter of the tree, trying to get... It all depends on what's available, unfortunately, because a lot of the nurseries, you know, all the communities are still trying to catch up. So we're trying to do the best we can, getting the best trees and the biggest size for the cost. But, you know, we are looking for getting bigger instead of like inch and a half or two-inch or three-inch. We're trying to get, you know, a little bit bigger tree to plant. Because the bigger... Obviously, the bigger diameter, the lot, you know, better chance it's going to survive. So we are looking into that. But again, it's on... Based on availability. We can't always get the trees we want, unfortunately.
Okay. Any other questions in terms of identity and image?
Spencer, I just have overall question.
Sure.
Wouldn't the... I guess you said that the... Or Manager May had mentioned that the Fire Department had prioritized what they wanted. I guess I assume one would be the priority. It's not on a 10 to one being the best?
Yeah, so one is the best.
Okay.
One is first priority, two is second priority.
I guess I question why we would approve seven, eight, and nine on... And not approve one, four, or six?
Yes. So looking back at seven, eight, and nine, you'll recall that's up under the general. So seven, eight, and nine were under the one-time column. So those are one-time expenditures, which are able to come from our excess fund balance. So they were competing for different dollars than the one through six. So one through six... So, sorry. So seven, eight, and nine are the equipment. It's... We spend it, we get the equipment, and the cost is done. The prioritizations of the one, two, three, four, five, and six were items that are ongoing costs. So it has to match those ongoing revenues. And so those are the ones that we did within those priorities. And, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. That clears it up. Thank you.
Could have... Probably should have just called it one, two, three in its own section instead of seven, eight, and nine, but...
Yes.
Okay, yeah, because it seemed like the numbers there, if we just take away nine, you could have all the incentives except for it's ongoing.
Right. Yep.
Okay, take away nine.
I'll pay better attention next time.
Take away nine?
Well, again, if it was to give the other, not the...
Right. Yep. Yeah. Yeah, thank you. I should have... I meant... I intended to clarify that, and I didn't think about it at this point. So thank you for reminding us.
Well, I was beginning to think 10 was the best, and we just... We had really beat him off that.
Got it. Thank you for that.
Make those A, B, C.
Okay. In terms of downtown, it's just prioritizing our current budget, associating some of those costs with the downtown. So a portion of that is what we, a portion of the economic development partnership, because that does economic development throughout things as well as the downtown. It's, you know, economic development in downtown, including, you know, code enforcement and obviously the debt service. And so we have a lot of different pieces that cover these different areas in terms of downtown and economic development, but no specific requests for anything new this year. The one thing I do want to point out in terms of the $200,000 that's in the economic development category for finance is debt service for the developer's note in connection with the Mariano's. So it's one of those things where, as you'll recall, we set it up as a debt, you approved it as a debt, the IRS treats it as a debt. In terms of accounting, it's treated as a sales tax rebate, so it can't be in the debt service fund. So we were told this year that we had to move it back to the general fund, so we've now put it in the finance department to cover that. So when we get to the total cost for the finance department, you'll see the finance department budget went up because of this developer's note, which used to be in a different fund.
Yeah, sure, that's what it was.
There's the 200,000 for debt service. All right, infrastructure costs, the one increase we have there is passcode only drive light replacement. So we're having issues in terms of the lighting there, so this will help take care of that as well as make them work.
It's mostly the underground. I mean, there's a lot of work, but there's a big problem with the buried circuit.
So it'll help the lighting, but it's dealing with the underground.
We will continue to look into where the programmability, the whole dark skies issue, we're investigating, well, grant opportunities too, but to put intelligent street lighting in there and try it out there first.
Would that cover the under?
This is just for the under. Was it just the underground or is, yeah. And then the rest is pretty much just replacing the heads, the poles and everything, you know, remain.
With obviously possibility of grants at that point.
Looking, still searching for those. After we get the grant writing funds approved, we'll do an intelligent application.
All right, in terms of transfers, the first several transfers are primarily dealing with gas and garage, so we transfer money. We charge the departments for the gas and the use of the garage in terms of the repairs. So those are the first pieces of the transfers out. Then we get into the vehicle replacement fund, and you can see the base amount and then the considerations. Most of the considerations are just the increase in terms of each year we go through when we say, okay, now that it's been another year, A, our costs still seem accurate, and then B, even if they do, there's some changes in terms of rounding and inflation and those adjustments. So that's the majority of those items. One of the $8,000 one in terms of fire frontline vehicles, as you'll recall, this is something that's somewhat in transition. Last year, we had talked about converting five vehicles to frontline for five years, and that was a change for fire. They'd had more vehicles as continued use, but it made a lot of sense to say, let's have five fire vehicles frontline replaced with them on the five continued use just with fire vehicles, so they don't need to be repainted and have as much done with changeovers. This year, in terms of finding out when those vehicles need to be replaced, it's generating a little bit of additional cost as we rearrange and restructure some of those, and as we add in the cost to cover having the larger vehicles, as we talked about, in the vehicle replacement fund. So all those together ended up causing the 8,000. That's the one big amount on that. And then patrol squads, the costs have gone up a little bit more quickly than we expected. We average 3% increase per year. This year, they went up a little bit more, and so there's a little bit more that we're saying if it continues growing at that rate, it's going to be a little bit more. So those are the other ones, a little bit more. As you'll see, some are positive, some are negative. And altogether, at the bottom, the total change in the amount we're putting in is of the 1.1 million, sorry, in total transfers, 1.1 million, we've had a change of 14,000 in terms of the requests. So grand total for the general fund, we are looking at a budget of $26,433,020. Any questions on the general fund? All right, we're almost done. So the last tab is all the same information, just in a different order, so we're not going to go through it all again in detail. So this shows it by department as opposed to by strategic plan area, primarily because there was a request previously to say, how much are departments saving or increasing? So we looked at like items by like, so that we could see, you know, for example, adjudication, both community development and IT at the same place. Now we're going to look just briefly at the total increase-decrease columns for the department. So you can see the total commission cost is going down slightly. Community development cost is going up by 21,000, which makes sense considering the fact that they're adding 30,000 in terms of one-time that we've just discussed and are saving the 9,000. The finance department is going up by 198,000, as we talked about. That's because of a $200,000 increase there. So it was minor savings. Sure.
They got nice chairs.
Once again, yeah.
Fire department's going up by 305,000 for all the consideration reasons we had listed. HR administration legislation is going up by 98,000. Again, you can see that's largely in terms of the one-time and ongoing costs that we've just discussed. Information Technologies is going up 13,000 with all of these cost increases.
Spencer, you just mentioned that fire's going up 305, but on my page, doesn't that say 295?
Oh, so, sorry about that. So one item that changed, I appreciate that.
Doesn't happen often.
It does, that's a good question. So right before, so shortly after we'd had all the documents printed, we realized we'd forgotten to add in the cost for the elevator billing. So as you'll recall, we implemented a new program for elevator inspections, and it's $10,000 of expenses and $10,000 of revenue. So both the money coming in and the money going out went up, so there's no change to the net difference. And so there is that change to the fire department budget. So excluding the elevator inspections, you've got the number there. So really, it's a $295,000 increase in terms of their current operations. It's the extra 10,000 when you add in the 10,000 in revenue that's offsetting it.
It's very impressive, by the way.
Well, it's really almost just a pass-through, really, right?
Yeah, exactly. It's revenue neutral, so we felt at that point it wasn't really worth reprinting all the pages for everyone, and we could just explain it if it came up. So thank you for bringing it up. Good catch. So we've talked about IT, the pass-throughs, you can see the increase of 139,000. We've talked about that for a police pension. In terms of police department as a whole, you can see overall their department is down by 62,000, almost $63,000. A large portion of that is the cost for patrol officers as we've had the more senior officers leave. They were obviously making higher dollar amounts because we have the STEP program. As the lower-paid officers come in to replace them, then it is a lower cost for the village for a few years. They've also, I mean, they also did, as all departments did, fine-tune things, cut down little bits here and there. And so it's, I'm not trying to diminish the 62,000, it's a great thing that they were able to cut that. And I know trustee Barry had mentioned previously of having a contest who could cut the most. So if we did, police would win that contest.
That's why he did that. It's the black uniforms. It saved us a lot of money.
And then Public Works, as a grand total, went up 68,000. You can see with their one-times and ongoing requests, that's well over the 68,000, so because they had different one-time requests in the prior year. And then the vehicle replacement fund, you can see had that $14,000 increase that we talked about. And Villagewide, obviously, these increases are above what had happened in prior years, so that's a $371,000 increase. So overall, with all of those one-time expenditures, ongoing expenditures, and the Villagewide increases, a grand total of 942,000, almost $943,000 increase in the general fund.
I think it's worth pointing out that from a department perspective, they have three basic categories where they budget. They've got their base budget, which is the returning, the operating expenses, stuff we do year-to-year every year, and it's always the same. And they have one set target for that to hit. And then on top of that are the new additional. Sometimes they're one-time considerations. It's a piece of equipment, we buy it once, and it's the ongoing, we explain that. It's a new program, it's a new person, it's a new thing, but it's going to cost us each year moving forward, so you have to pay attention to that differently. Every single department in the base budget made, you know, all of their targets and, you know, did well with that, other than the finance department.
Sorry.
But the, so these numbers, you know, even though they all look like increase, 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 it's all because of the one-time requests.
Right, it's the one-time.
Or the considerations, the new considerations.
Right, the things that we just went through is why they're increasing.
Yes.
The extent that they are.
But everybody did well with the base budget.
Yes, yep.
They're here. Did you guys?
It was a requirement.
No one jumped up?
I'd like to just make a comment on the budget, on the things that didn't get funded. I really believe in the incentives for the fire department, and I can see where we could either do one less beginning engineering of a project or put a little bit less in reserves just to fund those two items that didn't get funded, so that we have those incentives available. Because if we don't maintain that part-time department with the right incentives, we're in for a big budget increase.
Are those ongoing or?
Yeah, so.
There they are.
There's a couple parts to that request. So one, you know, points taken, and we'll get into that, and actually, there'll be a way to look at that in a second. But you, when you remember all his different little budget cylinders, sometime, you know, we only work with the monies that are in the same area. So the alley project that we were talking about. Is it 50%?
Yes.
Convention tourism and then capital fund.
50%, stormwater, 50% capital.
Stormwater, so there, that's not.
Can't come from there.
No, but we can do things in that fund to, we already, same types of business like other alley sections that was brought up earlier, we can talk about that some more. But we would need to look for a different capital fund opportunity to eliminate, to switch for those incentives.
Yeah, and I just think that we should look at that just because it's necessary to maintain that department. It's critical, and it's, you know, it's too, I think it's too stressful. It's very hard to rely on part-time people and good part-time people and then have constant turnover and turmoil as they've gone through now with more and more young guys, you know? And they're not as, you know, it seems to me that if you've been there a long time, you're committed, but if you haven't been there, you're not that committed. And, you know, I find that with the guys that work for me, it's not the same.
So kind of going back to an earlier comment, it wouldn't even be on the sheet if it wasn't worthy of consideration. So we, you know, agree with the value and what they are and what to do. Maybe you can add up what everything remaining's left. But our options now are to look at other considerations in the same column that would either be, you know, one-time or ongoing, and these are ongoing, and make an adjustment there, or, or what, look into more access, accessing more of the excess reserves. That pulls that away from other opportunities for sharing with things that we've discussed previously too, so.
Yeah, and I do want to point out just a couple of things. So first of all, I kind of glossed over these when we talked about them, but on those, on that fire department, so, and I'm, right now, I'm on the general by department tab, so it lists all the fire department items together. So you can see the ones that are highlighted are the ones that did not get fully approved. But the two, the increased incentives for weekends and for daytime, the 70,000 and the 43,000 were funded in full. Those amounts are included in full. The two parts of the incentives that are not is the 457 contribution, which was funded at a partial rate, and then the paramedic pay increase was not funded at this point. And so, but this is one where.
But the special services, so it's, it's half of what they asked for, so there's something there, but, but not the full request.
Yes, and the special services, the reason that that's listed as number one is because as we talked about at committee, we already had a couple of people there. When we were initially looking at it as the whole program, we didn't want to eliminate that, we didn't want to get to taking away jobs that we had just given people. And so that was obviously number one priority, but we can still maintain the people that we have and still keep at least the minimums of that program going with the 10,000. And the fire department felt that reducing that part down to the 10,000 was something that was able to help get a portion of that 457 contribution to be able to be there, because like you said, they felt that it was important, and so they were able to come up with a way to say, what's a good way to get to this point? So I think we were able to get those, it would be nice to fund all of them, but the challenge with getting into excess reserves is, these are again, the ongoing costs, so you're not just, it's not just a one-time saying, let's pull 30,000 out, it's saying, we want to pull 30,000 out of our excess reserve every year for the rest of forever. And that's where it gets to the challenge of that. So it's the kind of planning on pulling from the savings account as opposed to whatever money you get in, and that you're using it. So that's, that's the difficulty with it. But yeah, I mean, if there are other things that are in the ongoing column that we want to adjust, we certainly could. I'd have no problem with that.
Spencer, this, the way things that were requested by the fire department, were they okay with what was the decision, or was there?
So when they had initially listed it, they'd had some of these as kind of the full amounts, so the whole 20,000, as you can see, requested as they're listed here, the 20,000, the 36,000. And when we initially came to it, we had said, you know, in terms of how much money we had, we had to stop after, in terms of the ongoing items, after option three. And with that, they said, well, we'd like to rearrange some things a little bit to be able to get kind of the highest, you know, the, not the highest priority, because those were obviously the one, two, and three, but sort of that next level of the next priority up. And so with that, they rearranged, they rearranged the number one, they adjusted the number four, and then they were able to find other monies in their budget. So we had looked at salaries, and we had realized, you know, we've, as always, we're kind of conservative in terms of what we estimate the salary cost will be. The fire department has, over the last couple of years, done what they can to control costs and, you know, keeping the costs that we have for people coming in for extra, and kind of keeping a good rein on that. And they felt that they were able to be a little bit less conservative in terms of the salary account, to be able to get up to cover the remainder of that 457 and the annual fire inspector. And so during the initial sort of the, here's the simple version, when we said, okay, well then here's how much we can afford, the fire department said, okay, let's take another look at it and look at it in a little bit more depth and find other ways to adjust some things to get to this point. I'm sure that they would say it would be great to have all the other costs, and that obviously would be great if we had the money to do that. But I definitely think they're at a better spot at this point than they were when we first came back and said, well, here's the limit, here's what we're cutting based on your priorities. So they did have the chance to go back, revamp it, readjust, and get there. I don't know if that answers your question.
But I do think one simple pass-through, if Bruce and the board and everyone decides that it becomes a more priority, isn't that WSEC administrators, isn't that almost the same money? Isn't that a pass-through, is that 22,000 or something?
So that's in convention tourism. We could look at, see, you know, we could potentially.
Never mind, I'm sorry.
We could look to see if there's anything else we could consider moving over for that, but you're right, that is the same amount.
I didn't realize that was from hotel motel tax.
As requested, all six of those items, there's 30, 40, there's $60,000 in reduction presented.
Again, I'm just looking through a pass-through that if, if that's the way the board wanted to go to look for it, there's just not, doesn't seem like there's a lot.
Just an idea, what, I mean, rather than doing it forever, I would just like a retention or sign-on bonus for some of the paramedics, you know, and it's only a one-time thing. You stay here for 18 months, you get an extra 1,500 bucks or whatever the threshold is, but I don't know if that helps, just an idea. Bruce raised a good point, I mean, you.
Yeah, sure. Chief, chief's here. Get him to say if he. What you said is correct.
Yeah, with the, we're, we're good with what we received this year, we really are. We're, we're thankful to get those incentives. We did a survey within the department, and, and we shared that survey with the manager and finance and HR, and those were the priority things, those daytime incentives, those weekend incentives, the 457 plan. So once we saw what came back to us, we were able to look at things and readjust some other areas to be able to get a little piece of that pie of the 457. Now, in reference to the paramedic incentive to raise that starting pay up to draw those, I have since talked to the manager at Kurtz and Lindrali, and we've had some senior medics that have left our department where they were making somewhere between 20 to 25,000 more than the starting medic. So that 28,000 has really come down to the point where Kurtz's manager and the owner feel that they might be able to still do those increases we were looking for in the current contract amount that they have, along with the 2% that their own med are going to get. So I think we're going to be able to achieve that, so, you know, thanks for wanting to find that dollars, but I think we're going to be able to achieve it while finding additional dollars.
Well, it's there, so they found it for you, and that's good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right. I just know I need you to be competitive with everybody else, because as you compete for these people, and they can take the best offer, right? And they see that landscaping over there, and they go, I don't want to work here.
But we also have to look at the reality that, depending on what number you is, we're almost 18% up budget-wise. You know, I mean, we're 18% up already. Like you say, I think that the, we've tried, we've tried, you know, that's for sure, you know, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I think I'd like to hear if any of the departments were upset with the money that was decided on, I mean.
Besides the police.
That's what I was going to ask, if they have any input, Mike or Jill or anybody else? Any comments?
Did you tell them not to say?
Steve should go get a sandwich, right?
Yes, he's got to get out of the room.
I don't know Steve as much as Spencer.
That's right, yeah.
So in general, are we just having questions? Because I missed something, I'm sorry. And I think it goes back to infrastructure on page, wherever we are here, 23. This Cass and Burlington to Public Works detention, am I to say that that's the area across the tracks here that has been forgotten in the, in the three projects we've done around it? Because now Cass Avenue at the tracks is, you know, we've paved Burlington, and we paved Cass, and we stopped about Vincitore. The time you were public works director, and I was asked about, how can we stop there? And we left that. And today, it's deteriorated so badly, I was hoping that that's in this year's budget.
That is alley section D. So I think, I mean, I have to go find it, but I think.
Well, no, 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 I'm talking Cass Avenue.
How could Cass?
Cass Avenue, as you cross the tracks going, going northbound, the road is.
I don't know that there's any re.
That stormwater project that we're talking about is a 12-inch main storm storage going to go from Cass and Burlington to the new Public Works facility. It also will have an option, if any building goes on in that area, if you know what I'm talking about, they'll have the ability to tie onto that, and they can use our underground storage for.
We have our own facility in the planning for that, and there's a stormwater manager for it. This is an increment to make it bigger, to make it available to use for other regional opportunities.
Will that include the replacement of that bad section when that construction's done?
No, because this is all down Burlington, not down Cass.
Okay, nothing on Cass. So, I guess, are we addressing that this year?
It's not in the current budget, no. The, part of the reason was is because we can't have Cass and the alleys torn up at the same, you know what I'm saying, at the same time. So we're trying to get the alleys done first, and then we were going to look at addressing Cass Avenue. You understand what I'm saying?
But that being our main thoroughfare, and probably now, maybe one of the worst sections of any road, and then I thought we're putting off alley construction.
We're just that one, one block, but we're still doing Norfolk to London behind.
It's E, so that's.
It's E, that's the alley we're doing now.
The budget currently.
If we tore up Cass and the alley, nobody would be able to get through downtown at all, right now. So I'm not saying we're.
I mean, we're, we're going to have a life safety issue there when people start walking on Cass Avenue, because the road is, is literally splitting apart there.
Hopefully, they're not walking on too much, but.
Well, we close it for cruising nights, it is.
Well, we do, we do go out there, and we do, you know, patch as much as we possibly can, we'll do small repairs as needed, but as far as.
You're talking about that first couple hundred feet, right, north of.
Absolutely, it's, it's got to be some of the worst section in town. I mean, it is, it is horrific.
We can look in.
Are we doing an MFT?
Yeah, we have, we have about 390,000.
The factor I was told before is, is because of the train and the lighting and everything that it's, it's not an easy.
No, it's not.
It's not an easy fix. But again, if everyone's familiar, we paved Cass up to, I'll call it Vincitore, somewhere in there. And then we paved Burlington up into that intersection, and we've left from the tracks to Vincitore to just, it is, is, is.
I, I'm not arguing with you.
And again, when I pre had my questions, that was just one of the things that I was wanting to question about the budget, is to, to kind of make sure that that's included, because if we're, again, if we wait till next year's budget, we're talking two years, you know, it'll be the 100th anniversary, and we'll be tearing it up. And, and, and I don't know that anyone wants to tear up Cass Avenue on the 100th anniversary going up.
And I, believe me, it's a very good point you're bringing up. And that is something we can maybe do, talk about maybe doing a spot repair, you know, a full spot repair. The problem is, Noriel will comment on this, we don't know what's underneath there. I mean, is it going to have to be a full reconstruction or is it something we can resurface? Because if it's deteriorated enough-
And to accommodate, combine both points, is that leading up until now, we were talking about streetscape improvements and things leading up to the 100th anniversary, we don't want to be, at the time, don't want to be spending money paving Cass Avenue and then do Parkway work a year or two after that. It doesn't mean we shouldn't patch a bad section, but the, the bigger resurfacing is best way, but we can look to see how to, except we don't have another resurfacing project in this year, so it would be its own project and-
And these were my concerns, is that if this gets overlooked, I mean, is, does anyone else see it as I do? That it's that bad?
It's pretty bad, yeah. I drive on it all the time.
But if there's going to be a- No, you're right, it's bad. I mean, there's no argument there. But it's just that we don't, we're trying to figure out what the best time is to, do we do the full thing or do we do, like you're saying?
So, so just again, if we put off, let's say we approve engineering next year, you know, you're, you're looking at 2020 before there'd be any action, you know, the next year would be the resurfacing or whatever, so you're, if it doesn't get in this budget, you're talking just patching those holes and-
And another part where we're kind of waiting is because of the development at that corner. We don't, you know, if that goes through, then that's a great opportunity to fix all of that problem. But we don't, it's, there's too much unknown, you know, do we go ahead and spend that money and then we regret it, you know, and we're like, oh, we should have waited, you know, but your points, we'll take it. I mean, I agree with you, I've been complaining about that section for a while now, we just don't know, you know, just the timing just never worked right, because we keep hearing different things coming up. We're going to streetscape, we're going to have development there, we're going to do something else there. So, and before I patch that, I mean, we need new water main down that street, there's a lot, new electric lines, there's a lot of things that need to be done in that block, so.
What are we going to cut to get it done?
Where, and the intersection, and the detectors. Where? 75, 100,000.
To do that, to do it for events.
It's not just a patch, it's the resurfacing, it's signalized, you got to put all the detectors back in, which is why they stopped where they did, because you don't want to get in all the traffic control for the traffic signal, but-
But how long ago was when, when we resurfaced Cass?
Been a while.
Five years?
It was a while ago.
Four, five years?
It was more than that. We did south since we've done north. We did south a few years ago, and north has been late 90s, early 2000, I mean, it was, yeah, I think it was late 90s.
And I think that's what accentuates it too, is that you have nice pavement to nice pavement and it just makes it look twice, you know, or feel twice as bad.
If you had the 75,000, if that wasn't the issue, how long would it take you to be mobilized to resurface that area? Will it take a year?
We can do this same year, it's just a-
You could do it, you could do it this year.
Resurfacing is an easy contract to put together, might not even need a consultant.
Okay. So if the money is, it's money well spent for resurfacing, but that would be it?
If, yeah. Well spent, but from where, so that's-
Convention tourism. Everybody sees it.
It does, it does improve the taste of Westmont and it does improve the cruising nights, you know, if it's-
Let's go Spencer.
Retract my $75,000 comment. I would budget probably for the first block about 100 grand. Having such a small contract at that, plus with all the traffic that they would have to mitigate, because it is in our downtown, it's hard to estimate from there exactly how much it is, because usually one block is around $75,000 on a bigger scale project.
Noriel, where are we planning to do our resurfacing for the, this year's resurfacing, the 390,000 that we have in there? Do we have a specific spot?
Is that the balance of the MFT?
Yes.
We were looking at possibly, I believe it's Washington Street, Park Street, Traulby, and if there is potential to push for Cass Avenue, but that's difficult to schedule only because of all the development that is occurring at the same time, and the potential of future projects in the downtown.
Okay, so we can look to see if-
As Emzie mentioned, it was very difficult to schedule this with the idea that we might do a bigger downtown project, and then I'm tearing everything up again.
It just seems it's deteriorating so bad.
It is needed, all the way up into Ogden Avenue.
But much, much worse in the section he's talking about. We just did a couple hundred feet.
Just seems like such a small, I mean, I don't know that it goes 100 yards there, right?
It's really just the intersection a little far north is really bad. Actually, just past that first hydrant is what's really bad, because I remember I twisted my ankle last year on that, right by the higher-
See what I mean?
He's working on a claim, just like you.
Yeah.
Good, you got that in public real estate.
So then, is the consensus of the board that it's worth taking the risk that we may do this and then in another year or two, partially tear it up to do other things? Is that worth getting it looking better sooner?
Call it a patch.
If it's going to be more than two years, yeah.
Yeah.
If it's only going to be one or two years, no.
Needs at least a good patch.
Yeah.
So my guess is it'll probably be at least two or three years before we do streetscape.
Well, and much like these alley things, we don't know how the economic, you know, structure changes and if all of a sudden our downtown beautification is something that's cut, now our main artery is still going to be deteriorating. And, you know, I, I notice it every day. It seems like it's, it's a-
No, it's bad.
It's bad.
So, so in terms of funding that piece, we've got a few options. So one is we can see if there's a portion of that 390,000 in MFT that's available. In terms of other options, in looking at the capital fund-
Could we put pervious pavers in that section in a nice brick way and, and do it through stormwater?
So our stormwater is very tapped out.
I was going to, one of the things when I met with Spencer, stormwater and hotel tax now has been tapped out. We've been using it so much. We keep saving those two, and I don't think there's any left in there to be.
So we do have some in convention tourism we could potentially use, we have a little bit in capital we could use. So between the two of them, we have 376,000-
What's a little bit of capital mean?
So in terms of capital, we have about 165,000 left over in the balance, we have about 200,000 left over in convention tourism. So if it's 100,000, we could-
Forget convention tourism, it doesn't apply. So if you have 160,000, we can look at.
Right.
There's a lot of benefits if we're able to utilize non-MFT funding, because otherwise I have to, I'm under all of the restrictions of I dot restrictions. If there's opportunity for us to be able to use capital, I might be able to combine it with our alley project real quick and then try to get that done and coordinate at the same time. So it's a bid, it's part of a bigger package. The contractor that normally wins our alley project is also a roadway project contractor. So I might be able to get some good prices in that respect.
And to answer your question, I would want to do something permanent like pervious pavers, because there's so much other underground work that needs to be done at that intersection. If we did a patch to fix the problem like a band-aid, like you're saying, that would work for, you know, that'd be great. But if we did something more permanent, we're going to end up taking all that out and starting all over again, because we need new water main, storm sewer work at that intersection, again, electric line, all that stuff's got to get done. But I'm not saying we shouldn't do this project, as we just paved it like you guys are suggesting, I think that would be good.
And again, are you guys going to tear it up when you do that, the new stormwater that's from Burlington?
No, it's going down Burlington.
It just, it won't cross Cass, it won't cross Cass, okay.
Spencer, when you say there's a couple hundred thousand in hotel, that's on top of the reserve?
Yes.
So we're still meeting our 20% reserve in that fund?
Yes.
All the funds, except for stormwater?
Except for debt.
Debt.
Stormwater's ended.
Other option is still undetermined, but if there's work in the S curve, then there's roadway work being done right on that corner and we can just wrap it around the corner. That might mean waiting a year.
Well, I think we've all had that in the back of our mind, if, if it could be tied into, you know, a new road or something like that, but again, I guess my concern is, you know, I don't think the patch is really too much at this point. Like, you know, I mean, I think the patches are just that, are a patch, and, and I don't know that that, you know, just going out there and cold packing it or hot packing it or whatever.
Right, we just try to keep doing whatever we can, the best we can. You're right, that's not the answer. No, I agree with that.
You know, so it's-
Does everybody feel that's worthy of including? Yes, you got, Harold, now you've got something we all voted for.
Look at that.
When it goes up, you guys are for it. When it goes down, nobody likes the idea, uh-huh.
Can we name that 150 feet?
Yeah, yeah.
HB 3 Road?
Seems to me he wanted to spend more money than anybody.
Yeah, you know, I don't know.
You know, everything the police department saved us, I just blew it.
You see it more than anybody, so.
Yeah.
But I do think, in all, you know, joking aside, it's something we should address, because it's, it's bad.
Yeah, foot trap.
All right, let's assume, let me play the Neo Fight for a minute. And let's assume that we do this project over here, which, which we have to do. Basically, we're saying we're, we're going up a billion dollars. It's 932, now we do this patch on Cass, so now it's a million dollars. So that's how it's going to be read in the paper. Village Westmont budget goes up a million bucks. How much of that million dollars is tax increases? And I know I missed some of the beginning of the meeting, I apologize for that, but I was stuck over at the park.
Property tax increase?
No. How much of that million dollars is increase in water fees, increase in hotel motel tax?
So it's not-
Hotel motel tax, places for reading. How much of that million dollars is coming out of other things that we're, we're increasing in the normal course of business and how much of that is specific? Because that's how I think a Neo, how somebody who doesn't understand how all this money flows is going to say, oh, my taxes are going to go up a million dollars collectively.
So a large piece of that increase is from the sales tax revenue. So I put it up on the screen, it's on page, I can find it here real quick.
So what you're saying is some of this is just a normal course of business?
Right, we've had, as you know, some new businesses come into town, we've had our sales tax continue to go up while some of the other towns around have not been so fortunate, but our sales tax is going up and our budget is going up by about $750,000 in sales tax alone. Additionally, we've got an increase in construction fees that is pushing some of that. So it's the normal course of business, this budget does not specify increasing anything in general revenues. It does have the increase in water fund, but that doesn't cover any of those, that list that you had from the general fund.
But that's the message. When, when this gets passed and, and that reporter who has no idea what's going on and says, oh, you're increasing, the answer is, hey, the money's coming in because of increased sales tax revenue and positive things.
Right.
And therefore, we're using, we're using those increases to do the things that need to be done with, you know, within the community, not increase taxes out of people's pockets.
And a large portion of-
Because that's how I think somebody who, who just wants to look at that in a little box is how they say, oh, my taxes are going up.
We're using LGDF, so if you take it away, we won't be able to do these things.
Well, let's not go there.
The other piece of it is the one-time expenditure, so that 580,000 of it is coming from money that we've saved in the past. So we've saved money, we put it aside into our savings account, and now we're pulling that out to use for equipment and those kind of things.
Yeah.
So that, that 900,000 is in the general fund and that's savings. Additionally, I would assume we would use the, treat it as a one-time expense for this Cass Avenue, so again, it's going to be money that we've saved over the course of several years to be able to use for these kind of projects.
Well, and I think you touched on the other side of it too, is this is the budget, and the budget has everything in it.
Right.
And at this point in time, there are things here that we don't even know are going to happen, but we got a budget for it. So, I mean, there's two or three million dollars of things that may never, may never come to be.
Right.
Okay, thank you. I apologize again for missing the beginning.
Good review.
Still a good point.
Yep.
Well, I'm just looking at it from the standpoint of somebody who doesn't understand.
Well, the good thing is, Jim, we don't get any newspaper coverage.
You know what, I hadn't thought about that, but you're right, that may never come up as a question.
Question, if they look at last year's taxes and this year, and they see it going up, then they're going to come, what for? We always blame the police pension. Some pension, but when it goes up, it's usually the pension that goes up more than-
True. And then Spencer, is, is a lot of that increase due to car sales? Is that what, I know Larry's not here, but is that where a lot of, we're seeing a big jump?
Yeah, sure, that's a part of it.
Yep.
Yeah, and definitely some of it.
Okay, keep going, I got to quit.
Sorry, did you have a-
No, I'll wait.
Okay, I thought you were done.
We're mostly done. We're getting there. All right. So that next slide is just a pie chart, so you can see, if you're interested, the different way that it's spread out. So we're almost at the end now, that's page, maybe the pie chart didn't make it in.
No.
Apparently not. All right. Oh, I think we already saw the pie chart at the beginning. That's right, page 17 was the pie chart, so we're past that now. So now we're on to page 38 for the budget expense history, you can see in general how expenses went up. And so the general fund is up, as you mentioned, by about a million dollars, but overall, if you look at all the budgets, total budget including pass-throughs and transfers and all the capital improvements from '18 to '19, our total budget is down significantly compared to last year, because we're doing different one-time projects. So general fund's up, but overall, it's down. This just shows the breakdown in terms of percentage, so you can kind of see how it's shifted and changed. The next one is specifically to the general fund, and so you can see, again, by the breakdown of the different sections and areas, how that's gone through. And then you can see the percentage of the general fund operating accounts, and how that has changed. So kind of the final point, the conclusion is, we've got this budget that ties back to our strategic plan priorities, our operating revenues and expenditures balance, and the balance, the ending balances are pretty close to our target. So that's, both the good news is that it's, we're not under our targets, we're not extremely far over the target, so that doesn't give us a lot of room for lots of future daydreaming, but at the same time, we're not just sitting on taxpayer money, we're using it to provide the services and facilities that our residents need and deserve. So that's, now I'm finally done. Any other questions?
Couple, and again, this is just so that if somebody would ever ask a question, we used to say that about six cents or seven cents out of every dollar that you paid in real estate taxes went to cover things for the village. There was really a small, very, very small amount of, of our real estate taxes went to cover the village, and almost all of it was either pensions or the, the paramedic tax, which was voter approved. Is that still basically about the same?
What's our rate? Our tax rate?
7% of the community's tax, the school's 70 to 75, I think, yeah.
So we're still about, we're still at a very small percentage of what, so that's a small potatoes amount of money compared to, again, the quality of the sales tax revenue and the other revenues that are coming in. It doesn't come out of my pocket as a resident, unless I want to go buy a car, unless I want to go, you know, and to the restaurant where taxes are collected. And I think that's an extremely important point.
Spencer, what is our total, if you add up all our fund balances, what are we sitting on?
B dash O two.
That might be a good, healthy number everybody keeps in there.
So we're expecting to end at 20 million, 419,871, so that's on one of the early pages.
That's in the front, isn't it?
Yeah, probably towards the, you know, so in terms of pages, if you look at page 19, you can see that grand total there. So on page 19, the estimated ending balance is 20 million, 419,871. If you add up all of the minimums to make sure we're safe in each and every one of our individual funds, we would say we'd like to try to have about 16 million to cover those pieces. So we have a total of about 4.3 million on top of those. Again, those are all in the different funds, can be used for some specific things. And we already have some things probably in mind in terms of some of the TIF areas, but that's what we've got sitting there at this point.
And that includes the water fund and like the-
Yes.
Every fund we have.
Every fund we have.
Even if it's for a specific purpose, okay.
Yes. Yep, grand total of that.
The IMRF and everything, all right.
Yes, IMRF, DEA.
What's the grand total?
The grand total of our balance is expected to be 20 million, 420,000.
The peg balance is about 16, so you got about four.
About 4.3 available over and above the recommended targets.
20 million's a nice.
And revenue sharing and the payment of sales tax revenue is what, about 60 days lag?
Yeah. So in terms of the sales tax, the people buy the products in one month, say January. So you go to the store, you buy it in January. The store then reports it to the state in February. Then the state gets it, processes it in their books in March, and then sends it to the village in April.
So about two and a half months.
Spencer, if we're doing the architectural plans, engineering plans for the public works, when would you suspect that we'd want to look at the bond? A year from now, two years from now?
So my guess is we'd probably want to look at including it in next year's-
Next year's.
Budget, I would think. Assuming we can get the design finalized this year, then that, we'd know the exact total dollar amount. We could-
You are working on the next budget, aren't you?
Yeah, he's already started.
Start going through, again, I know we've kind of got our initial plans of how we're gonna fund it. Once we know the exact dollar amount, then we can convene again at a committee meeting, finalize exactly what we want to do, and then plan on that for next year's budget.
And the direction was?
So the direction was, continue the water rate increase. As you know, the plan was to do that for about five years. So the plan would be, I think, we've been doing 40 cents, and I think we said if we do 30 cents for the next two years, we could keep doing that.
We do all this for-
And then places for reading tax, a half cent.
Okay. And that would be enough to cover 15 million debt?
Yes.
Okay.
Assuming interest rates hold the same and everything stays the same.
And that, Spencer, that balance is even the reserve that we set aside in case we lose a portion of our LGDF?
Yes. Yep, that's part of that 16 million that we're holding.
Okay, okay. That's an emergency bottom line.
Yes. Yep.
Any food left in there?
Anybody additional comments? I think-
I just want to thank Spencer for a great job. I mean, it's so good, we should pay you, or you should sell tickets.
Yeah, we do.
So we've talked, we've kind of had three big categories that we analyzed. One was, first was alley sections and the order that we're picking to do that. The second was the fire department incentives, I'll just, as a group. And then the last one was this Cass Burlington work. So the, this budget approval will be on next Thursday evening. And as I've understood those three things, the alleys were as presented, the incentives were as presented, but as recently modified. And then the addition to, in some form, the Cass Burlington work, we'll fit that in. And we'll see that on, you'll see that on Thursday with those changes, that change.
Perfect.
Unless there was anything else I was missing.
I think not only we're congratulating Spencer, but the entire staff, and Ruth's sitting back there. Every time I see you need an answer, she's going like this and pops up over there.
Yeah.
So I think the two of you work real well together.
They do.
Well done. It's easy to follow. I don't know, Mary, did you follow the whole thing?
And again, I want to say thank you to Steve and to Spencer and the entire staff, because how they've tied this again back into that strategic plan, and it keeps going forward as a living document. And, you know, that's the bottom line. That's what we've spent a lot of hours working on it.
There isn't one dollar in here that doesn't apply to this.
Exactly. And it would be nice if we would, Steve, maybe down the road, we can work out some kind of a, without sending all of this, but to send something to the original strategic plan committee and just say, thanks for all your hard work over this.
Maybe that summary sheet that showed the strategic plan breakdown would be a good-
Yeah. And say, this is where you took us.
So I know we somewhat jokingly said about the newspaper and the budget, and Trustee Addington, I know, was just commenting that it's kind of a shame that we don't get it out to the public and that they're not more engaged. Is this something, not obviously in this whole forum, but in a summary that either Larry shares with the new Westmont, what is it called?
Word.
Westmont Word. Is this something maybe we somewhat summarize in there in the coming time? So at least we're being transparent from our standpoint? Is that-
Or even, even do something in the neighbors. I mean, we gotta get this, the message out to the people in town that, you know, there's good work being done here, and we're not wasting money.
On balancing your budget, too.
You have a nice pie chart he always sends me for the Oakwood newsletter I do, and it shows where the money's going, some high level, it's like, you know, 10 bullet points.
Something like that. And I think the infrastructure with the water increase, because I think most of us as residents are feeling that water increase now. It just came again. And so I think we need to show them where that infrastructure is being spent.
I commented the other night at EIC, Brittany is on there, from the library is on there, and she said the Westmont Word, they can't hardly keep it on their desk. People are taking that thing. And, you know, it was all about the natatorium. And they love the fact that they could go there and grab that and read that information. So they've been resupplied and resupplied.
Who puts that together?
Larry.
Larry.
That guy?
Yes.
He woke up.
Yeah.
And I didn't see in the budget, he's not getting another assistant or anything?
Well, he-
No.
Trying.
That's okay.
Triple his staff. The nice thing, last night, we had the DuPage County Clerk's meeting, and I was sitting with the Oakbrook Clerk and her deputy, and they both said, we're so happy about the natatorium, just ignore the rest of the- She said, I don't know who they're thinking.
Who's she kidding?
She said, that's going to help Oakbrook. People are gonna go there shopping. And they said, this is ridiculous that they're carrying on about. So it was nice to hear that.
Yeah. Any other comments?
Not on that.
She spawns. Yeah, I know. Mean it again, said, well, no further comments, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn Nero.
Second, Little.
The made and second adjourned.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.